Cephas, as well as some others. And I'm going to call up the first panel and then we'll get to opening remarks because that'll give the panel a chance to get up to the dais. First panel is Aaron Zapia, Director of Government Affairs, Housing Alliance of Pennsylvania, Sarah Kim Eisenhardt, Attorney in the Housing Unit at Community Legal Services of Philadelphia, and Sherri Thomas, the Housing Initiative Director for the Legal Clinic for the Disabled. I'm going to turn this over to Representatives Kuduski and Cephas for some opening remarks and then we'll get started with the testimony.
All right. Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. I'd like to start by thanking the public and my colleagues on the Housing and Community Development Committee for joining us for this critical conversation. And particularly, I thank Chairman Sterling for his leadership in organizing this hearing. I know that we all gathered here today because we believe that housing is a human right. All residents of this Commonwealth deserve housing that is safe, healthy, and accessible according to their means. However, because of systemic poverty and an affordable housing crisis, this right to housing is not extended to everyone. Many working-class and underemployed people are precariously holding on to their dwellings and one unexpected hardship can cause them to fall behind on their rent or otherwise create a situation that leads to an eviction. An eviction is a traumatizing, violent event that should be avoided at every opportunity. Our great city of Philadelphia has become a national model of eviction prevention, creating and maintaining an eviction diversion program that has allowed renters and landlords alike avoid a costly and brutal process. Unfortunately, evictions do still occur. Knowing this, it is our duty to make them as compassionate as possible. We are, after all, forcefully removing a human being from their shelter, one of our essential needs for survival. A tenant facing eviction deserves to know when their eviction will occur. They deserve for it to occur without the threat of physical violence and they deserve transitional services to help them process and recover from their loss of housing. These basic dignities are why this hearing is being held today. Philadelphia County is the only county in Pennsylvania that relies on a private entity to enforce most of its evictions. The Landlord Tenant Office, or LTO, was created over 50 years ago to replace the constable system. Landlord Tenant Officers are private security contractors deputized by the LTO and local courts to carry out evictions. These private contractors are not required to have any certification or training. There is no public contract that can be viewed outlining how they must conduct themselves and their names or backgrounds are not subject to public accountability. This storm of privatization with zero oversight means that LTOs cannot currently be held to any meaningful standards for an eviction. This year, we've seen the dangers of this as two women were shot within months of each other by the LTO. And there are countless other stories of violence enforced by landlord tenant officers, whether that violence is physical or emotional. Tenants who were not given clear notice of when their lockout would occur. Private contractors arriving at their doorstep unannounced with no identification, telling tenants they have 15 minutes to remove a life's worth of possessions. And then, what happens after? What happens after someone is violently evicted from their home? Do we provide transitional services? Do we help them find a place to stay? Do we give them space to process and grieve before telling them to move on and find somewhere else? As far as I can tell, the answer is no. Last week, after a pause of evictions due to a lot of the unaccountable behavior that I just listed, the LTO resumed performing evictions, but instead of using private security contractors, they have hired suburban constables. And a private entity further contracting out its behavior to entities that are not in Philadelphia is not a sustainable solution. It does not provide the public accountability that we need and it does not ensure that someone is there to help the tenant transition during the eviction. We must do better. As a majority-black, working-class city, we should consider ourselves duty-bound to protect our most vulnerable residents in one of their most vulnerable moments. I am forever grateful to our allies in council, Councilmembers Kendra Brooks and Councilmember Jamie Gaudier, who have been beating the drum to demand action. As state legislators, it is our time to join them and do our part. I thank all the impacted tenants, advocates, and stakeholders who are here today, who are testifying today. I look forward to working together with all of you to pass common sense solutions that will uphold dignity and compassion. Thank you.
Thanks. Representative Cephas?
Thank you. As you stated, I'm State Representative Morgan Cephas. I am also the Chair of the Philadelphia delegation. I want to start off this conversation, you know, thanking both of our chairs, thanking my colleagues both on the state level for being laser-focused on a very challenging issue at a very challenging time. Also, I want to thank my councilmember colleagues here in the city of Philadelphia for also joining arms with us to talk through what we can do, not just here in Philadelphia, but what we can do across the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. Because again, it is not just the city of Philadelphia that is experiencing this housing and this rental crisis. As we talk about some of the incidents that have taken place, we know that a tragic shooting in July this summer marked the third eviction-related shooting since March in Philadelphia. But just last week, a fatal shooting occurred in Pittsburgh when an eviction notice was in the process of being served. That means July, a 33-year-old woman shot during lockout. In late March, a 35-year-old woman shot in the head during attempted lockout. Late June, a dog shot by landlord tenant officers while serving an eviction. And unfortunately, we had a fatal shooting that occurred in Allegheny County by the sheriff's office who were going to serve an eviction notice in the city's Garfield neighborhood. So again, this is not just a challenge that we're seeing in the city of Philadelphia, but across our Commonwealth. And as we collectively, as a country, as a city, as a Commonwealth climb our way out of COVID-19, as we look at the issue of inflation, the cost of living continuously rising and families struggling to, you know, maintain the basic necessities of life, it's critical and important now more than ever that we hold every agency accountable as it relates to the families that we are all sworn to protect. So I want to thank you again to my colleague Rick Kuduski for leading this charge. I want to thank the city of Philadelphia. I know we are partnering across the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania to ensure that every family has dignity, particularly during a very difficult time in their lives. So I thank you, Chairman, for giving me the opportunity.
Representative Condon, do you have any opening remarks?
Thanks, Chair Sterling and Chair Urban. It's really great to be here. I wish we didn't have to be here. Like my colleagues, I was horrified when I learned about another shooting that happened in the period of eviction lockout. You know, the time when someone's being evicted from their homes is probably one of the worst days of their life. Imagine the worst day of your life, someone dying, getting bad news at work. This ranks at the top of that for a lot of people. And during these situations, this should be a time when whoever's doing the eviction should be helping to de-escalate this and make it less traumatic for people that are involved. And when we're hearing that these incidents are occurring, that people are getting shot and they're happening with greater frequency, when we're learning that there's not a process for accountability, there's not standards for these eviction proceedings, this is actually something that in a way is kind of sanctioned by our local government, it's pretty shocking to hear. And so along with my colleagues, I'm honored to be here with everyone that's on this panel. I'm grateful to our Chair Cephas of the Philadelphia delegation, Representative Kuduski, Representative Ronnie Green, who couldn't be here but is also co-sponsoring, co-priming a bill that is calling for eviction accountability, that's calling for standards that will make these situations less traumatic and more regulated and also setting it a place for warning for people who are being evicted and setting a standard for accountability and transparency. So thank you again. I appreciate it and I appreciate our panel. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to back up a minute here now because I neglected to do some things I'm supposed to do. First off, I want to introduce my counterpart, Republican Chair Rich Irvin, who's here with us. And I want to let everyone know that for everyone's information, this meeting is being recorded and streamed live on TV. It will be saved on the committee's YouTube channel. And I also want to introduce Joshua Stouch, who's from the PA Constables Association and he's their legislative director. He's a constable in Montgomery County and I believe he's got a few of his colleagues with him today, at least I met a few on the way in here. And then finally, Dina, would you please take the role?
On leave. Rep. Brown.
On leave.
Rep. Cephas.
Here.
Rep. Green.
On leave.
Rep. Khan.
Here.
Rep. Kuduski.
Here.
Rep. Madison.
On leave.
Rep. Sebel.
On leave.
Rep. Smith Wade Out.
On leave.
Rep. Byd Ali.
On leave.
Chair Urban.
Here.
Rep. Gordon.
On leave.
Rep. Cavill.
Leave.
Rep. Cooper.
On leave.
Rep. Jones.
Here.
Rep. Futz.
On leave.
Rep. Major.
On leave.
Rep. Malu.
Leave.
Rep. Schlaba.
Leave.
Rep. Sander.
Leave.
Rep. Forzey.
One leave.
As I understand it, Representative Green is online. You have the floor.
Thank you, Chairman Sterling. Thank you, Chairman Urban. Today's public hearing on for-profit contractors enforcing evictions in the city of Philadelphia. My name is Aaron Zapia. I'm Director of Government Affairs for the Housing Alliance of Pennsylvania. The Housing Alliance is a statewide coalition working to provide leadership and a common voice for policies and practices to ensure that all Pennsylvanians have access to safe and affordable homes. The horrific and unfortunate events that prompted today's hearing are evidence that evictions involve individuals in crisis. Any eviction carries the potential for dangerous confrontation, so great care must be taken to have the best qualified and the most accountable professionals perform this duty. The safety of citizens, especially the most vulnerable, must be any jurisdiction's primary and foremost duty and that responsibility should not be passed along to an entity removed from the civic process. Public offices, not private entities, should carry out evictions. Philadelphia currently has a system where an operator enters a home with no regulation, no oversight, and no accountability. Philadelphia is an outlier in this regard as other jurisdictions have the county sheriff or another public office handle evictions. The Housing Alliance supports state legislation such as Senate Bill 732 introduced by state senators Nikhil Saval and Sharif Street. Senate Bill 732 would ensure that public officials, not private contractors, are tasked with serving and enforcing writs of possession, alias writs, and other orders stemming from landlord tenant cases. The legislation amends Title 42 of the Pennsylvania Code to clarify that courts throughout the Commonwealth cannot empower private companies or individuals to perform evictions. We also recommend an emphasis be placed on training standards that include de-escalation and a close examination of the special circumstances surrounding evicted tenants, their family members, and their children. We further believe that these incidents are yet another symptom of not only an overall global housing shortage, but they are a symptom of policies that routinely place people in desperate situations that can increase the chances of violent confrontation. Many tenants are well aware that just an eviction filing can bar them from accessing future housing. Even evictions found to be not for cause result in tenants being screened out by future potential landlords. The Housing Alliance recommends automatic eviction record sealing during court proceedings and ultimate full expungement of all eviction records. What I'll call a second-chance precedent has been set in recent years with the recent Clean Slate Law, which provides a pathway for expungement of certain criminal records. It's clearly only in keeping with the intent of recent legislatures and administrations to mirror Clean Slate for those suffering the consequences of long-past civil matters that affect access to the basic need for shelter. Further, we support legislation that will require courts to immediately provide a list of local resources to tenants upon a landlord filing for eviction. This simple step can help alleviate some of the stress if tenants know what help is actually available to them. Lastly, we support increased state-level homeless assistance program funding targeted to those facing eviction. We feel these are important steps that can be taken to help restore public trust and create a more fair and safe system for tenants, landlords, and public officials. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Chairman Sterling and members of the Housing and Community Development Committee. My name is Sarah Kim Eisenhardt and I am an attorney at Community Legal Services. Thank you for the opportunity to testify before this committee on the crucial matter of eviction lockout procedures and their impacts on the lives of low-income Philadelphians. Community Legal Services is deeply committed to ensuring the rights and welfare of our city's residents, especially those facing eviction. CLS plays a critical role in addressing the legal needs of low-income renters in Philadelphia, including those confronted with a multitude of housing issues like illegal lockouts and the legal eviction process, repair concerns and utility shut-offs. And each year, we serve over 2,500 tenant households. Our mission centers around the hope that we will one day eliminate the need for evictions and safe and stable housing will be a fundamental right for all. Until that vision is realized, we strive for the improved policies to ensure that legal evictions are executed safely, respecting the dignity and well-being of all parties involved. It is unsurprising that in a city where 54% of all renters are cost-burdened and where a minimum wage worker would need to work 3.4 full-time jobs in order to afford a two-bedroom apartment, evictions in Philadelphia are all too common. Destabilization and displacement devastates our community's most vulnerable communities. We cannot overlook that this destabilization and displacement disproportionately harms lower-income, Black, and Hispanic communities. Nationally, eviction lockouts are handled by public entities, generally sheriffs, constables, or marshals. Philadelphia is unique in having a private entity authorized to perform what is essentially an extension of the court process. Community Legal Services believes that by instituting policies which mandate comprehensive training, transparency, and accountability, we can increase safety and reduce violence for all parties in the process. We are currently participating in a working group established by the Philadelphia Municipal Court System and have shared these policy recommendations with our working group. Our first set of recommendations focus on training. We propose that any entity authorized to perform eviction lockouts be required to complete city-specific, robust training to ensure that officers uphold stringent standards of conduct and embrace best practices in the lockout procedure. Currently, no specific training requirements exist for landlord tenant officers in Philadelphia. In contrast, sheriffs who are authorized to perform evictions elsewhere and constables who perform evictions across the state are both subject to initial and ongoing training requirements. Pennsylvania sheriffs complete more than 700 hours of basic training, where constables complete 80 hours of education, in addition to firearms training and ongoing education requirements to remain certified each year. In stark contrast, tenant officers in Philadelphia have no publicly available or enforceable training requirements. We propose that any entity authorized to perform eviction lockouts in Philadelphia complete a comprehensive and city-specific training program. This should include comprehensive education on the role of landlord tenant officers in the civil law process, use of force, crisis intervention, de-escalation techniques, and familiarity with local resources and social services. We also recommend that any entity performing lockouts develop standards of conduct and train all officers to perform duties accordingly. Training should cover best practices in the process and facilitate evictions as peacefully as possible and instill in prospective officers these high standards of conduct. We call on any entity performing lockouts to take a collaborative approach to the process. For example, rather than using force to effectuate a lockout alone, an officer seeking to perform a lockout in Philadelphia should call on one of the city's crisis intervention response teams, which pair law enforcement officers and mental health professionals to jointly respond to calls for help. It is crucial that all policies and trainings on use of force emphasize de-escalation and nonviolent intervention. We also recommend that authorized entities adopt and train officers on step-by-step procedures for performing lockouts as safely as possible for both the officer and the public, including how officers should identify themselves and when they should call for additional support. Officers should also be trained to identify instances where a lockout should be delayed. For example, if an undetended child, person with disabilities, or other individual who cannot fend for themselves is discovered, officers should make attempts to connect that vulnerable individual to appropriate support and emergency services and should reschedule the lockout when needed. Our second set of recommendations focus on transparency. We propose that entities authorized to perform lockouts build public trust in the eviction process by ensuring transparency in the procedure. Any entity authorized to perform lockouts in Philadelphia should publicly share their training requirements, policies, procedures, code of conduct, and a complaint process. Annually, these entities should publish a report detailing completed trainings, number of authorized officers, statistics on evictions performed, complaints, and complaint outcomes. Likewise, there should be transparency in the scheduling of evictions. Currently, tenants in Philadelphia receive a notice of upcoming eviction as soon as 10 days after a judgment for eviction is entered. Then, generally, the lockout may proceed anytime in the range of 11 days to many months after that initial notice. There is no additional notice. To enhance transparency, tenants should be served with notice of their scheduled lockouts. This advance notification allows tenants to prepare for the transition and access necessary resources. Our final set of recommendations focus on holding authorized entities accountable for their performance of judicial duties. Currently, there is no particular recourse for a tenant who believes they were subjected to unjustifiably violent practices during a lockout. Officers who deviate from prescribed standards of conduct should be subject to a complaint and discipline process. In the interest of accountability, we recommend the establishment of an advisory board tasked with overseeing the lockout process. This board can facilitate compliance with annual reporting requirements, review officer authorizations following completion of training, address complaints by investigating and recommending appropriate disciplinary action, and provide a collaborative space for stakeholders from the court system, the city, tenant advocates, and landlord advocates to improve this process. This advisory board would serve as an additional layer of accountability, safeguarding the rights and well-being of both tenants and officers. Community Legal Services is grateful for the opportunity to share our insights and collaborate on a future in which every Philadelphian enjoys the stability and dignity of safe housing. Our policy recommendations reflect our commitment to safer and more just eviction practices. Thank you for your attention and we look forward to continued cooperation in pursuit of these vital reforms.
Thank you. I also believe we are joined by Mr. Xavier Carthen, an impacted tenant. Mr. Carthen, you may come up and join the first panel. Thank you.
Good afternoon. I'm Xavier Carthen. First of all, I'm 61 years old and I have never, ever been evicted. My eviction that took place back in February was traumatizing. I was sitting, talking to my doctor to schedule a colonostomy, and this loud noise. I thought my door was about to come down. That officer knocked on my door so loud, it scared the living daylights out of me. I had to hang up from my doctor. I had 15 minutes to get out. My two cats, I was...I'm so upset still. Well, what happened was, I did not get a 30-day notice. Back in January of 2022, I did get an eviction notice, but then it was part of the COVID housing process. I was waiting for them to process my application to pay my rent and that application was incorrectly filled out. So they didn't pay for everything. They paid for one month and I had to come up with the rest, which I did. But I did go to court to do a payment agreement and to pay a little bit more each month. I did that up until December of 2022, when I had a financial situation. Now, to let you guys know, I'm disabled. I worked for 37 years. I have a bachelor's degree in business administration. I worked all my life from the age of, from 14 to the time I retired in 2012 here in Philadelphia when I was, when I almost died of endocarditis. I became on disability. Several years after that, I broke both my legs jumping from an apartment building. I survived from that and then I was in a hospital. Took me four months to learn how to walk again. This is in 2017. Then I finally found a place to live, the place where I got evicted from. I was there for four, almost five years. And so, yes, I defaulted on the agreement to not be late for the next 12 months. Stuff happens. So back in December, when I notified the landlord that I'm having a situation, you know, when you're on a fixed income and things happen and the COVID, all kinds of stuff, you can name so many situations that people go through that a lot of people don't understand. I reached out to my housing case manager to help pay for the rent for December and January of 2023. The landlord signed off on that document saying that she will accept the payment. While that was in process, the eviction was in process that I did not know about because she signed that document saying she was going to accept payment for December and January rent on January 7th. When I got the eviction notice, it was executed on January 13th. My landlord was supposed to stop that. She did not because she was going to accept my rent. She was going to get a check for $2,000. That never happened. I had to call my case manager and tell him to stop the process. So two weeks later, now, if I defaulted on that agreement, they should have notified me saying that you're going to be evicted. That did not happen. That did not happen. They tossed me out on the streets. So I did not communicate with the landlord. The manager was upset. He was... He was surprised, too. The manager who works onsite, he was surprised that the sheriff showed up. And so, I was evicted. And I'm living with a friend right now, down in the basement, with bugs and fleas and all kind of stuff, my two cats. And it's so funny, because I tried to apply for an apartment, for a room, for $650. It was really nice. The landlord was receptive of my situation. I had told him about that I was evicted. He said, "Don't worry about it," you know? And it was a nice, shared, you had your own space, it was beautiful. So, I applied last month, thinking that I was going to be out of this situation in this basement with all these bugs biting me. You can see all these bugs biting me, and I have a health issue. I was diagnosed with HIV in 1998. I'm a 28-year survivor, in addition to my other illnesses. So I applied for this room, filled out the application. Two days later, he sends me a text, "Sorry, we can't help you." I said, "What do you mean, you can't help me?" "Well, your NTN score..." I said, "What is the NTN score?" "It's the National Tenant Network that reports evictions." I felt like a criminal. I said, "You tell me that because my score was 34, you cannot rent to me?" He said, "No, we can't help you." So having eviction on your report is just like having a criminal. I'm not a criminal. It's like having a criminal record. I feel like a criminal when I try to apply, when criminals, you know, I don't want to knock them, but when they come out of jail, they're going to have a hard time getting a job, because they have a record. Now I have a record. I'm a criminal for trying to rent a place to stay. I have a criminal record. I have an eviction is a criminal record, because you cannot rent. You cannot find a place. That's why you have the homeless situation. That's why people don't want to, you know, try to fight for their situation and give up, because that's where I'm at right now. And so where I'm going to live, I don't know. I'm afraid, I don't even apply for any places to stay, because that eviction is going to pop up, because I'm a number. My score is a 34 on my NTN report. So the bottom line is that, you know, I had to call my doctor to reschedule my colonoscopy, because I can't, you have to prepare, you got to be in a nice living situation and get prepared and do, I can't even do that. I had to postpone that. So my health is at jeopardy, because my score is a 34 on the NTN report. And I don't know what else to say. It's just, it's hard, you know? I've been deleting all my emails from potential places to rent, you know, because I register with different housing agencies, and they send me emails, "Here's a place to rent, here's a place to rent." And when I look at the qualification, I delete, I delete, I delete, I delete, I delete, because my NT score is a 34. I have an eviction on my record. I'm a criminal. I don't exist anymore. And that really, that's really upsetting. And so, right now, I'm just waiting for a place to stay. This guy has a house. I just moved in, paid $850, no application, none of that. But I don't know when that's going to happen. So in the meantime, I'm staying in this basement. I've been in this basement since February, and I got pictures of it. You guys want to see what I'm living in? I can show it to you. I'm living in an environment that I'm not used to. I've been living in that apartment for almost five years, and he evicted me over some, over technical, over some BS, I want to say. And the landlord just didn't want to communicate with me. And on top of that, even though it was a second eviction, I did not get a 30-day notice. I did not get a notice saying that you defaulted on your agreement with the initial eviction that you are going to be, you're going to be evicted. The second time, it was no nothing. It was a bam on my door, get out. And that's where I'm at today.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Carthen. I really appreciate your, and we all appreciate your testimony, and thank you for sharing your experience.
All right, thank you.
Hello? Can you guys hear me? No. Okay. Thank you.
Chairman Sterling, representatives, thank you for this opportunity to testify regarding the practices of the landlord-tenant office in Philadelphia. My name is Sherri Thomas. I'm the Director of Housing at the Legal Clinic for the Disabled, otherwise known as LCD. LCD provides legal services to low-income individuals living with physical and mental health disabilities. Philadelphia's rate of disability and poverty is only rivaled by two other major cities in the United States. This indicates that the challenges and reforms laid out below will impact a significant number of Philadelphians. Forcible removal from one's home is distressing for anyone, but for someone living with a disability, the challenges are multiplied. Durable medical equipment, such as wheelchairs, walkers, hospital beds, commodes, all of these things need to be transported with someone as they're evicted. Multiple prescription medications is the norm for our tenants who live with chronic conditions. Durable medical equipment and prescription medications are frequently the items we see left behind as people are hastily removed from their homes. Not only does someone need to figure out how they're going to remove themselves, but they also need to figure out how they're going to safely transport and store this equipment. Not everyone is capable of physically carrying everything they need when they are actually evicted. And not only that, homeless shelters do not always take people, depending on what their disabilities are. So for example, if you have a service animal or an emotional support animal, those animals cannot come with you to the shelter. If you have a caretaker, if you're disabled to the point where a caretaker needs to be with you 24 hours a day, that person also cannot come with you to a shelter. This just highlights all of the planning and advance notice that needs to be made. I represented a tenant who was locked out of her property without critical medical equipment. She had had two knee replacements, double knee replacements, and she was using a walker and assistive rolling chair. When she was evicted, she had 10 minutes to leave and take everything that she needed to take with her. She had no idea what was going on. It turns out, her landlord had gone to court without her, told her he was dropping her case, did not drop her case, and took a judgment. Afterwards, he continued collecting rent payments from her and scheduled a lockout. This was a complete surprise for her, and she had no choice but to leave with just the clothes on her back. She left behind her walker, her assistive chair, and her pets. For weeks, she stayed at an extended-stay hotel, because the landlord refused access without additional rental payments. And it was not until she got a lawyer that she was able to return to the property. Last fall, LCD had a senior citizen client who was incredibly medically fragile. We attempted to connect this tenant to social services, but without a date and time of when the lockout would actually happen, it turned out to be impossible. Despite requests to both the landlord and the landlord-tenant officer, we were not given this information. The tenant stayed in limbo, and in fear, he wasn't able to leave on his own because of his medical conditions. But he also didn't know when that knock would come at his door and he would be put out on the street. Some people aren't even home when a lockout occurs. Currently, the landlord-tenant officer can either personally serve the alias for it, or they can post it to the door. For folks who are already out of the home at medical appointments, running errands, or going to the grocery store, it is impossible to have what they need unless they are carrying all of their things with them. We're talking about medical equipment, prescription medication, and devices. If they are locked out, the locks are changed while they are not there. They are then at the mercy of their landlord's schedule and discretion on when they can get access. For all of these reasons, we ask for transparency and accountability for the landlord-tenant office, or actually, the entity that performs evictions. We ask that evictions are carried out with as much transparency as possible. First, there should be written policies, procedures, and best practices that are available to the public, including how lockouts are scheduled and what happens in cases where the household includes people who are medically fragile or who have disabilities. For example, we have been told that an eviction may be paused if someone is found to be medically fragile. However, we do not know if this is true in all cases, and because there is no standard or practice or procedure, we deem that this practice is discretionary and dependent on who is conducting the lockout. This makes it incredibly difficult for people to plan. It makes it very difficult for us to advise disabled tenants what will happen when it comes time for their eviction. Currently, the maximum amount of notice of date and time that we receive is five business days, with some lockouts occurring in less than 24 business hours after we receive notice. This timeframe is not enough to address the needs of medically fragile and other disabled people experiencing an eviction. Additionally, clear guidelines must exist if postponement is necessary to connect to social services. This brings me to my next point. Dispatching social workers and crisis supports at the time of eviction is necessary to identify whether removal should be postponed and to give the tenant direction and resources as they face homelessness. Philadelphia uses crisis intervention response teams in responding to calls for mental health emergencies. Similarly, during a lockout, which is inherently violent and traumatic and the worst day of some people's lives, crisis responders and social workers shall be employed to ensure safety and dignity for those being removed from their homes. In addition to transparency and the use of social services, we call for accountability. First, by removing this function from a private for-profit entity and enforcement of best practices. The landlord-tenant office is private and for-profit, and they employ contractors rather than employees. This leaves room for profit to be a motivating factor in how evictions are conducted, both the frequency and how many take place. And this factor can usurp other factors that are important to the public interest, such as safety and accountability to the neighborhoods and communities in which the officers operate. Secondly, the status of officers as contractors rather than employees reduces accountability oversight, and these officers are separated from those things. In summary, we call for transparency, accountability, and use of social services. We must remove the eviction function from a private entity. We must establish written policies, procedures, best practices, and enforcement. We must provide advance and accurate notice of evictions and deploy social workers and crisis support at the time of eviction. All of these reforms will introduce a more compassionate and respectful way to deal with people experiencing this traumatic event, while also encouraging and enforcing confidence in the public system that we work in. Thank you for hearing this testimony and considering a way forward for Philadelphia and its residents.
Thank you. I really appreciate all the panelists for your testimony and for being here for this really important hearing. I just also want to quickly recognize some of the other representatives who are with us, who aren't on the committee. Representative Chris Rab is with us, Representatives Darisha Parker, Representative Jason Dawkins. I think that's everyone else. Okay, I think at this point, we'll get to questions. We are pretty behind schedule, so...
Keep it quick.
Well, I'll just say for members and testifiers both, to just try to keep the questions and responses as succinct as possible while still answering questions. I'll pass it to Representative Cephus.
Thank you, Representative Kudjuski. So first and foremost, I just want to thank you all for your work in this space. Again, as I mentioned in my opening remarks, it's a very difficult time in this country as it relates to housing and as it relates to the rental community. And I really feel like the city of Philadelphia has led the way with our city council in our diversion program, and I know a lot of you were all at the table helping to shape that had eliminated a series of evictions that could have taken place. And, you know, I just want to say thank you for your work. And, Mr. Xavier, I am, you know, I understand your story. I am beyond apologetic for what you had to experience in this city of Philadelphia. I believe every agency, everybody that has to deal with an individual at a very difficult time should be coming to the table, not with the perspective of profits over people, and that is a reflection of us using a private entity to carry these situations out. You should have definitely been, you know, offered alternative opportunities, resources to help you get through that tragic time, because when we talk about homelessness as a result of evictions, that just shifts the financial burden from one system to another. So, you know, I appreciate, you know, you all's testimony today and, you know, providing you all's different perspectives and lenses as to where you are. My question is best practices. Obviously, again, you have seen these type of situations escalate over the past several months. You know, again, unfortunately, someone losing their life out in Pittsburgh, and God forbid, we would not want to see that escalate and happen here in the city of Philadelphia. So from a best practice perspective, who should we be modeling our efforts after here in the city of Philadelphia, but also across the Commonwealth? And my second question is just to get a sense of the trends. Since the private entity has been in charge of evictions, how many situations have gone to this level of escalation that we've seen over the past couple of months? I'm not sure if any of you could answer that question, but is this an, have you seen this as an ongoing pattern of this private entity, or for some reason, is it just escalating in this moment?
I would say, one of our main issues in terms of tracking this data is the lack of transparency. It's very hard to understand the scale of this problem when we don't have any data on the scale of how evictions are carried out, how many instances in which a tenant would have complained about the practices that happened to them if they'd had an avenue to make a complaint. So that's why accountability and transparency are so important. And to your first question, I would say, we have been drawing in working through what would best practices look at, drawing from the fact that the constables and the sheriffs have training requirements and that there is authority to have oversight boards for those entities. And we would say, we should model that for Philadelphia, but we should make it specific to Philadelphia. So rather than truly modeling it after anywhere else, we should be at the forefront of making this a system that works well, of bringing multiple stakeholders to the table and making a truly collaborative process and making best practices a living document, where we're always learning from what's going on and always increasing how much we can support tenants in the process.
Thank you.
Next, we'll pass it to Representative Jones.
Thank you, and thank you for your testimony. So just a quick question. It was stated that the constables have the training, a lot of the training that you have listed as being necessary, de-escalation and so forth. The assignments would be handled by the judiciary here in Philadelphia. Now, also, you testified that transparency and accountability, well, that would, I believe that would already exist with duly elected and sworn officers, like as constables are or sheriffs are. So the constables would have that accountability and transparency. Perhaps, I mean, I know you're looking for a specific to Philadelphia and the situations that you have here in Philadelphia when it comes to the use of social services. Perhaps that could be integrated, but rather than, I'll just use the terminology reinvent the wheel, rather than we reinvent the wheel, we have constables performing these services throughout the Commonwealth. And I think they, as duly elected peace officers, they could perform these services here. The accountability is in place, the transparency is in place, and then they could partner with the social services as a requirement to do these things in Philadelphia. It's just, is that something that's viable, is my question?
Yeah, I think one response to that is, we were able to talk with some folks who are tenant advocates in Allegheny County, and one of the benefits we heard about of the constable system was that those constables are elected in their communities and remain engaged in their communities, are known in their communities, and, you know, have care for their communities. So we would want to enjoy the full benefit in Philadelphia by having any public entity who is based in Philadelphia knows our communities, knows our resources, and... who is based in Philadelphia knows our communities, knows our resources, and has a vested interest in making our community safe for everybody. So while the constables do have more training than what we have here, ultimately, what we're asking for is accountability to our citizens and training for our citizens and transparency for what's happening to our citizens and to enjoy the full benefit. I think any entity authorized to serve lockouts in Philadelphia, whether a landlord-tenant officer or a constable or sheriff, all be held to these same standards.
Okay. And I understand and appreciate that response. I think, I guess I'm thinking of the constables are an elected officer of the state, you know, in total, and they can perform services throughout the Commonwealth. And they would, I think the accountability would fall under the judiciary of Philadelphia. And so I would think that the constables would be a viable option until an entity, it seems to me that currently, an entity with those three, the transparency, the accountability, and that collaboration with social services currently doesn't exist or exist well. And so currently, having those constables in place with that, with all that necessary training, seems like it would be a viable option at this point. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I believe we'll go to Chair Hiven next.
Thank you for your testimony today. I really appreciate that. Myself, I'm from about 200 miles away from here, so second time ever being in Philadelphia. But maybe you could just bring me up to speed a little bit on how this private entity, is there more than one, or is it just one private entity that is handling the evictions? And where do they get their authority through evicting people within five minutes, which I think is almost ridiculous? And, you know, Mr. Carthen, I sympathize with your situation that you're in. So I just was wondering if you could give me a little bit more of an in-depth explanation on the private entity?
Yes. So our president judge for the Philadelphia municipal court system has the authority under state law to appoint a landlord-tenant officer. So we do have a individual landlord-tenant officer who gets authority by appointment and then contracts with other, you know, contractors who become deputized landlord-tenant officers. So they can perform evictions for our court system, and we also get sheriffs who can also perform lockouts in Philadelphia. So there are two entities, one is public and one is by appointment in the judiciary.
Is it mostly the private entity that you have the most issues and problems with of not maybe following the policies and the procedures? Or is it even some of the public entities, like any of the sheriffs or deputies or anything of that nature that you would have those issues with as well?
So on the one hand, in the municipal court system, we most often see landlord-tenant officers performing those evictions. There are very few instances where the, a landlord hires the sheriff at the municipal court level. It is thought to potentially take more time, have more expense related to it. And then a second part of my answer would be, once we establish these best practices and this training protocol, we would want everyone to be obligated to it, whether it's the sheriff or the landlord-tenant officer.
So currently, the landlord-tenant officer has none of the training that your constables or your sheriff's deputies would have?
We just don't know. None of this information's available.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. I think Representative Sterling and Representative Bellman.
Thanks. So a couple of things, just the recommendation for legislation about sealing eviction records. I think where our committee is working on a bill to try and look at that, because when it's, if it's eviction for damage to the property and things like that, I get that. That's a reasonable thing to let another landlord know. When it's eviction for some of the other reasons, like it's a case with this gentleman here, there's no reason why that person should then be prevented from renting later on because of an instance that occurred in their life at some point in time. So we're trying to get some legislation together on that. The, so several of you talked about having a social worker present at the eviction. And I guess from my perspective, I would like to have a social worker present at the eviction, but I would also like to, at the first notice to the tenant, that there be something required in that first notice that says, here is the name and number of a social worker. And I'd also like the social work department of a county to say, here's the name of somebody who just got served an eviction notice, and they aren't going to be out for another 30 days in some cases, but you should contact them because that's the time for that social worker to do what they can, as opposed to holding that person's hand as they're being led out the door. And so while I want somebody to be there on the day of the eviction, I'm hoping that if a social worker gets involved 30 days earlier, they never, we never may come to the day where the person needs to show up when the actual eviction occurs. So that's something I've talked to Representative Kudjuski about in terms of trying to incorporate that into some legislation to make sure that this process is, because it was, you mentioned about the traumatic or the trauma involved in an eviction. Look, I'm a small landlord, I have a couple of units, and I've only ever had to evict one person in 40 years of being a landlord. And the reason I had to evict them was because they didn't pay their rent, they were non-responsive. I later found out it's because they were actually in jail, so they couldn't respond, they weren't even home. But the day that I showed up for the eviction, 30 days after I had sent them notice and all that kind of stuff, it was a traumatic experience for me to walk into an empty apartment because it was somebody else's home. And I felt like I was violating their home. I mean, I owned the property, but, and they hadn't paid rent for two months, but it was a traumatic experience for me. I can't imagine what it's like for somebody who's actually living in that home. And so if we can, if we can take that from a level up here and bring it down to someplace where we say, okay, we got to resolve something here, let's figure this out, that ultimately is where I think we should try and go. And it was mentioned that there is a housing crisis. The committee has determined that housing, we are, of housing units that are $300,000 or less, which is about what it costs to build a two-bedroom unit at this point in time in the state of Pennsylvania. The state of Pennsylvania is 233,000 units shy of where we need to be. That means we need to spend $80 billion on housing to get out of our crisis. And so that crisis is not going away quick. And so in the meantime, we can't let these kinds of things continue to happen while we wait for $80 billion worth of housing to get built so that there's not a crisis when somebody gets evicted because they can go rent somewhere else. So anyway, I don't know whether any of you have any comments about that, but I just wanted to get that information out there.
Thank you, thank you, Chair. I believe, oh, okay, you, all right, Representative Bellman. All right, I just kind of wanted to echo what the Chair was saying. And I've been working in constituent services for about eight years now, and we get a lot of people coming into the office and they need real help when it comes to their status about living in their current situation. They are being served evictions and they don't know where to go. They don't know how to navigate the process, and they, more importantly, don't know how to find a new home with a new, with a status of actually having an eviction. So I wanted to work in a little bit more about the services that the Chairman referenced and that was referenced in your testimony earlier. So what exactly, what services would you imagine to be there on the day of and what services would need to be present before eviction day to actually help renters?
Sure. So I would say we've talked about our Philadelphia eviction diversion program. We could begin the connection to services before the judicial process even starts. In a perfect world, we would have this comprehensive system where at the first notice to quit from a landlord telling a tenant, we want to begin the process to move forward with an eviction, that we could also make a connection to resources at that point. And that's why in terms of talking about the advisory board, we think it's really important that stakeholders across the board, our city legislators, even our state legislators, those who have the power to give us resources, to give to tenants who need them, they could be involved in every step of the process. So I would say a connection to counseling, to support could begin before the eviction process even starts. And then moving forward, continuing to serve notice of resources with each notice that comes with the court process, with being served a complaint, also being served notice of how to get in touch with resources, how to access a social worker, direct contact information would be amazing. And then, you know, after a notice of judgment is issued, to serve a notice of the judgment with a notice of resources, to get a writ of possession that also includes how to get in touch with resources, to really attack this from every angle and have social workers come out to the home before the day of a lockout, so that there's not even an armed individual there at the initial contact, but only an offer of support. That would be wonderful. And then again, in there, when there are instances of landlords alerting the officer that they believe that there could be an instance of violence at this property, perhaps they have knowledge of the tenant or other struggles, we could automatically send out a crisis intervention counselor along with the officer to ensure that there is the ability to counsel and de-escalate in the moment. And then when we don't have that advance notice and the lockout is being performed, to step back and stop the process and wait for a counselor to arrive before moving forward. I think we want to make sure that in every step of the process, before court and after court, there are robust connections and attempts to make connections to services.
Thank you. Just to follow up, I would like to hear all some of the other panelists if you have any thoughts about that question as well, as it pertains to the crisis intervention specialists, just any of those kind of services you think would be available or necessary. And yeah, just what resources before, during, and after too, that you think, whether it is that crisis counselor or some other entity should be providing the tenants during the eviction process?
Thank you. So we would love to see people get connected to services as far upstream as possible. Even at the first service of a complaint, you know, sometimes we see things where it's an issue of non-payment of rent. Perhaps that person needs to be connected to rental assistance and other, you know, agencies within Philadelphia who have funding available. Perhaps the complaint is based on unsanitary housekeeping. We have been in situations where a person needs an intervention to clean up their home. I've represented a tenant where he was current on rent, the only thing was he had too much stuff. He was not a hoarder, but we were able to connect him and get everything cleaned up. So the eviction in and of itself was completely avoided to begin with. So those are examples of ideal situations where we would like to have social services far upstream. I gave you an example of a medically fragile tenant. What we would have liked to see in that situation was a connection to service that would safely transition him from that home into another facility. We found out that a homeless shelter would not take him because of the level of care that he needed. And so in that case, what do you do? And so those are situations where if we had these social services connected far enough in advance, and going back to the advance notice of when a lockout will occur, 24 hours to five business days is certainly not enough time to figure out where someone is going to go and how they're going to be kept safe and healthy moving forward. You know, as attorneys, we're both attorneys sitting up here, we try to, we try to negotiate settlements where tenants get time to move, but that time isn't very valuable if all they're doing during that time is spinning their wheels, dealing with a negative rental history that's not allowing them to rent elsewhere, but also not being able to be connected to proper supports to actually move safely.
Mr. Carthen or Mr. Zappi, if you'd like to answer the question as well, but also no pressure.
Well, I can, I can talk a little bit about the mental impact that it, that this eviction caused on me because I didn't have any social services, I didn't have any intervention prior to, I didn't get, I'd had no notification at all that this was about to happen. You know, like I said, I was just sitting, you know, drinking my coffee, making my doctor's appointment, is it on?
Yeah, just a little closer.
Yeah, I was just, yeah, I was just, you know, I thought everything was fine, you know? I thought the funding that I was going to get to help pay with the, you know, my back rent was going through a smooth process, come to find out that that was not the case. And I'm sitting there that morning drinking my coffee, just a normal day, I'm okay, but then five minutes later, I was not okay. The mental impact that it caused when that officer who was seven feet tall, he was about to touch me, and that was frightening because he gave me 15 minutes and he was counting down the minutes. And I'm like, my two cats, I'm trying to, you know, replenish the litter box, I'm trying to, I just didn't know where to go. I called my friend to let him know that I'm being evicted. You know what he said? He said, "Are you joking?" He said, "You lying to me?" I said, "No, really." I say, "I am being evicted." He had to stop what he was doing and come to rescue me because they told me that I had 15 minutes and I had nowhere to go. The social services, I was listening to these ladies about, you know, having someone there prior to all of this is going on, but like I said, I had no notification of me being evicted. They would have given me 30-day notice, I would have had opportunity to get help, you know, or find a place to stay or, you know, something. I was, that is the most traumatic, I'm traumatized. I'm still to this very minute, I still hear that bounding, that banging on my door as if I lived in a 10-bedroom apartment. I lived in this one little room, one-bedroom apartment, and they knocked on my door so loud. That's another thing, that's the first panic when you get that knock on the door. It's not like, it's like I'm going to bust down your door knock. Those officers need to be trained not to scare people like that because I could have had a heart attack sitting right there. But then he came in and the process was devastating, you know, because I didn't know where to go. And when he was counting down the minutes, that's when my heart started to race so fast that, you know, I had nobody to reach out to, only my friend. And he had, he said, "I'm coming to get you." You know what he, he packed up some of my stuff, all of my furniture, he moved in, he moved all my stuff out into his car, day by day, day by day. We would go back because I had 30 days to get all my stuff out. I went back there every single day to move all my stuff in his car, his four-door car. I didn't, I didn't have a U-Haul. In his car, I moved everything. And then on top of that, guess what we did? We cleaned that apartment so clean, we took pictures of it to give the landlord appreciation. We cleaned that, we did not leave, we washed the refrigerator, we cleaned that apartment as if I was going to get my security deposit back. And that, and the manager, he, I said, "Here's, this is it, we're done." He looked, he looked at the apartment, he said, "You guys really cleaned this place." Me and my friend cleaned that apartment despite of me being evicted. And so like I said, I don't know how other people will handle that. I know when I heard about the situation in Pittsburgh, I was devastated about that too because, and then some other situations that happened with the, these officers coming in to evict people, that it, you feel like a criminal. They treat you like nothing. You're not even humanized, you're dehumanized pretty much when they tell you, "Get out right now, we're dumping you out on the street just like a piece of trash." That's exactly what I felt that day, a piece of trash. So, and I didn't have no support, no social services, nobody to help me go through this process. You know, I was thinking about when you said, my case manager, I tried to call her, but she wasn't at, in her office. And I didn't know else, I didn't know who else to call, but my friend, who had to stop what he doing to come bail me out. So yeah, some more social services, a lot more stuff needs to be done. And I also want to talk about when I tried to rent for this apartment because these criterias are trying of trying to rent again is a pain and a you-know-what because you have to have this, you have to have that. That apartment was $650. That's three times amount of my income. I could afford that. I can afford that. The rent that I got evicted, it was, they went up from my rent from $785 to $900 during the eviction process, but this last one, I can afford $650. My rent is three, my disability is three times that amount, I can afford that. But I got rejected because of my eviction. So I can't, so I'm gonna have hard time renting again.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Carthen. We really appreciate your testimony. It's clear in hearing about your story and the others that it's a very isolating and, like you said, dehumanizing experience, and it, the least we can do is have someone there to support you before, during, and after, right? So I know we are, we are running behind. I do have one, I swear, one final quick question because I think we've been talking about this quite a bit during this panel, and I would just like to hear everyone's perspective on it. We've talked a lot about what public accountability should look like and what that could look like. In public accountability, that is about the entity itself, but also about the public and how we as citizens and residents and tenants of Philadelphia can hold our city accountable to fair, to compassionate and dignified processes. So just quickly, if you can talk about what meaningful accountability and public accountability means to you, what do you think that would look like? I know Ms. Eisenhardt, you had mentioned the Oversight Board, which I think is a really great and smart idea, but if there's other thoughts you have as well, if you could quickly share for us, I'd share, it would be appreciated.
Absolutely. So as another model, I'd also point to the public reporting requirements. So sheriffs and constables are subject to public reporting requirements, and we'd like to see the same thing. You know, it's hard to answer questions about how frequently are complaints being made when we have no way to know. There is no complaint process. We want to know if there was complaint process, how many tenants in the past would have made a complaint. Moving forward, if we establish a complaint process, how many tenants will make complaints? What are the outcomes of those complaints? We just need to know. We need to see the data to be able to analyze it. So I think for me, having a public reporting requirement would be another great step towards accountability.
I echo those thoughts, and I think that this all goes towards the transparency that we've been asking for. Representative Seifus, you had asked earlier if this was an escalation, and because we don't have the data, we don't know. However, I think what's happened here is that these tragic events have brought to life some unsavory practices that have been going on for decades. We have all heard from people who have experienced these awful evictions, these traumatic evictions. And so I think what we're doing here, this is a first step to that accountability, honestly, and that transparency. I also think that giving people an outlet to grieve what has happened and bringing, giving folks the ability to challenge what's happened to them is absolutely important.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Zappia, would you like to respond as well?
Sure. Yeah, I'll just echo what Sarah and Sherry explained. I mean, there should be a public recording requirement and just the fact that this would be carried out by a public office that is subject to the oversight of perhaps an elected official, somebody that is directly accountable to the public. I use the term in my testimony civic process, which is, you know, just very broad, but yeah, that's it.
Fair enough. Thank you. Thank you all again for your testimony. I think at this point, we're going to move on to the second panel. I'll just thank you again. Okay, I think for the second panel, we are going to be joined by Mr. Andre Del Valle, Vice President of Government Affairs for the PA Apartment Association, Mr. James Bennett, Representative for the PA Residential Owners Association, as well as HAPCO, and Mr. Kyle Webster, General Counsel and Vice President of Housing for Action Housing. Thank you, gentlemen, for joining us, and we will start with Mr. Del Valle.
Good afternoon, Chairman Sterling and members of the Housing and Community Development Committee. My name is Andre Del Valle. I'm the Vice President of Government Affairs for the Pennsylvania Apartment Association. We represent just under 285,000 units and about 300 property management companies across the Commonwealth. Here locally in Philadelphia, we represent over 38,000 units and 49 property management companies. Just a few months ago, I had the opportunity to testify on Philadelphia City Council's Resolution 20433 introduced by Councilmember Brooks, which held hearings on the roles and responsibilities of Philadelphia's landlord-tenant officer position, the policies and procedures it manages in the eviction process, particularly around writs of services and clarifying oversight, ethics, and public accountability for the landlord-tenant office. Since those hearings, we've seen a number of reforms made to the landlord-tenant office in hopes of these, in hopes of increasing transparency, notification, and safety between all parties. Under the new protocols, evictions will be conducted in teams of two, the landlord, of two landlord-tenant officers, at least one of which will have received all the training required for the certified Pennsylvania constables. In the future, schedules showing the dates and times of evictions for the following week will be shared via email with any tenant action group or interested stakeholder wishing to receive it and with all the, and with all tenants who make inquiry of the office. At the request of tenant advocates, the dates and times of evictions will also be placed on the court's docket. Tenants may learn the date and time of their particular eviction, therefore either from their counsel or by checking the court docket or by calling the landlord office or, as some will refer today as LTO. Whose contact information will be provided to tenants together with the service of writ of possession, giving the tenant notice that an eviction is imminent. Landlords will be required to submit information to the LTO office in the form of an affidavit before future evictions will be scheduled. The information will disclose the known issues that otherwise may not come to light until an LTO eviction is in process. All such issues will need to be addressed in a reasonable manner prior to the eviction scheduling. Pending application for alias writs may be updated to include the affidavit before being scheduled. While these reforms have been reactive given the recent incidents here in the city of Philadelphia, today's hearing is set to take a proactive look into the future of the eviction process across the Commonwealth. It should be known that our apartment owners and managers do not seek out opportunities to evict residents, which is why the Pennsylvania Apartment Association proactively worked on policies like the nationally recognized eviction diversion program here in Philadelphia, and even joined the White House Eviction Reform Summit as we all work to prevent housing instability across the Commonwealth and the country. Many of our members prior to and during the pandemic proactively met with residents who were facing financial hardships and began creating and to this day continue to make payment plan agreements. And once American Rescue Plan funds were made available, those very same housing providers urged tenants to apply for these funds made available by President Biden's administration. The emergency rental assistance funds assisted landlords who had not received payments in over two years while also assisting tenants by ensuring their arrears were paid off. Last budget cycle, we advocated alongside city departments, advocate groups like Community Legal Services and the Philadelphia Bar Association for local rental assistance funds to be made available. We were successful in getting $45 million in local rental assistance, which continues to benefit both tenants and housing providers to prevent housing stability across the city of Philadelphia. As we know, the eviction process is costly and protracted, and there's no economic incentive for these owners and managers to file for an eviction except as a last resort when a contract or lease is breached. It is simply bad business to have vacant units or high rates of eviction in our building and in our industry, which is why we're running nationally at a 96% to 98% occupancy rate among our multifamily housing industry. Evictions are also often saw in cases of non-payment of rent, instances where residents jeopardizing the safety of others, or disturbing other residents through nuisance behavior. Today's hearing examines the specific issue of evictions and the role of the landlord-tenant officer. And let me be clear, evictions are a troubling experience for all parties involved. However, they are a necessary part of managing an apartment community, and no one, whether they are resident, owner, property manager, or landlord-tenant officer should face violence or threats at any point in this process. Rental housing providers have engaged in the eviction process as their only legal remedy to remove a resident who has breached a lease to lawfully regain possession of their property. Here in Philadelphia, evictions occur after a housing provider has already tried to negotiate with the resident and now legally must go through 30 days of mediation with third-party mediators through the, once again, nationally-known eviction diversion program. This added step hopes to find a common ground to prevent an eviction. There are notices sent for mediation, notice of riots, writs sent, and a number of other outreach pieces to the resident, all prior to the eviction being carried out. We're not here to speak on behalf of the landlord-tenant office or the courts, however I can say that, however, I can say that many housing providers across the city do rely on the landlord-tenant officers, who are not sworn enforcement officers, unlike other Pennsylvania jurisdictions. This is due to the expedite process, the reduced cost in comparison to city departments. While in other counties, they have sheriffs, deputies, or constables who perform the evictions and serve orders in landlord-tenant cases, Philadelphia primarily relies on the landlord-tenant office or the sheriff's department. I don't want to speak for the sheriff, who I know will be testifying later on, but from our members, many of the housing providers across the city have shared concerns of the potential increased cost, process delays, and other challenges of the eviction process if transferred to the sheriff's department. The Pennsylvania Apartment Association would welcome any opportunity to continue to work with this committee and all stakeholders who would be impacted by any potential changes to the existing structure, whether that's locally with Councilmember Brooks and, I see, Councilmember Gaultier, or any state-level officials, State Senator Nikhil Saval, Street, and all the members of this committee throughout the process. What we hope is that today, today, and what I hope will be future conversations, does not have to be an either-or, but rather an and-conversation, how we can all work together with housing suppliers and find innovative solutions with the current infrastructure, all while protecting the residents across the city of Philadelphia, a goal we all share. We do believe there are tangible solutions that do not add further cumbersome requirements to the LTO and the courts, or that increase cost on housing providers who in the end need to go through an eviction process, all while protecting residents. We appreciate the opportunity to testify today and look forward to working with this committee in the future to find innovative solutions.
Thank you. Next, we'll have Mr. James Bennett.
Good afternoon, Chairman Sterling, Chairman Urban, and members of the Housing and Community Development Committee. My name is Jim Bennett. I own and manage rental properties here in the city of Philadelphia and surrounding suburbs. I've been in business for 32 years, and my specialty is affordable rental housing here in Philadelphia. I'm here today on behalf of the Pennsylvania Residential Owners Association, PROA, and its two local chapters, HAPCO, Homeowners Association of Philadelphia County, and DIG, Diversified Real Estate Investor Group. I've been a long-term member of both chapters, years and years, probably three decades. As I stated before, almost all of my rentals are affordable homes and apartments in Philadelphia. I do my best to keep rents affordable and our properties in as nice of a condition as possible. Unfortunately, over the years, I've been forced to use the services of the landlord-tenant officer to regain possession of some of our properties. Although there's always room for improvement, generally speaking, the LTO system works very, very well. Our association opposes the elimination of the LTO program, and specifically, we oppose a new repossession program through the sheriff's office. People talk about accountability with the sheriff's department being a government entity, but in the past, we've seen serious problems with the sheriff's department. I don't know if people remember the John D. Green administration, but I do. Our association members reviewed the new changes of the LTO program, and I would like to comment on each of them specifically. But first, I remind the members of the committee that the LTO program was instituted in 1969 as a reform measure due to the widespread criticisms of the Philadelphia constables who handled evictions up to that point. We don't want to go back to the ways of the past. We don't think it's in the best interest of Philadelphia renters or landlords. Evictions and lockouts are emotional, they're stressful situations. No landlord wants to evict a tenant. In fact, all the landlords I know work their tails off to keep and retain their tenants and work with them to solve differences. Under the PA Landlord Tenant Act, it's a very lengthy process to evict a tenant. In Philadelphia, it's much, much slower. Having done it a number of times, I can tell you, my last several evictions have been in these six to eight months range. During that time, the tenant has had many, many notices. There are no surprises here. It's a late notice, it's a second late notice, it's a notice to perform or quit, it's a notice of diversion rights, it's emails coming from the diversion system, it's a scheduling of a diversion mediation hearing. After that, it's a summons for a court hearing, it's attending a court hearing, it's a notice of the outcome of what happened at court. Many times, it's a judgment by agreement, it's a breach of a judgment by agreement, it's a mailed writ of possession, and it's a physically served writ of possession. So there are no surprises, and it's a long, long process, and each and every day during that six to eight months, the tenant has an opportunity to catch up on their rent or cure their other lease defaults. Unfortunately, the simple fact is, some evictions are sad but unavoidable. So the question becomes, what improvements can we make to the LTO program? Our association understands the new procedures as follows. Item one, evictions will be conducted by a team of two landlord-tenant officers, at least one of which will be trained and certified as a PA constable. We understand that for safety purposes, this is probably a good idea, and we don't oppose it. Item two, new deputy landlord-tenant officers with experience serving as PA constables will be sworn into service in Philadelphia County by the Presiding Judge of Municipal Court. This is a positive change, we endorse it. Item three, in the future, schedules showing dates and time of evictions for the upcoming week will be shared via email to tenant action groups, interested stakeholders. The dates and times will be posted on the court's docket website, and the LTO office will share dates and times with affected tenants. Having been a landlord for 32 years, I can honestly say, this is a dangerous proposal. It will lead to armed standoffs, it will lead to people barricading themselves into their homes, it'll lead to protests and riots in front of the property. For the safety of the tenants and the safety of the landlord-tenant officers, we oppose this proposal. Item four, landlords will be required to submit to the LTO office an affidavit about certain conditions related to the property. I have the affidavit here, and by and large, we don't oppose it because it could be, it could be helpful. Many times, the landlord may not have all the requisite information to share with the LTO office, but isn't a bad idea. It asks about pets on the property, possible minor children on the property, knowledge of any weapons on the property, possible violent or dangerous people on the property or disabled people. So by and large, we don't oppose this. Item five, all deputies will be reminded to cease and desist from evictions if unexpected issues arise. Postponed evictions will only be scheduled after the issues presented or resolved. This is concerning to our association because it appears to us that it's rewarding an unruly tenant. If we act up, if we cause commotion, if we threaten violence, if we threaten to pull out a firearm, the eviction is going to be postponed, and the bad-acting tenant is rewarded by maybe a 30-day stay in the property. The other concern here is it seems as if it offers a tenant another round of mediation that's not afforded to them in the landlord-tenant act. It says it won't be rescheduled until issues are resolved. So what do we do? Do we have a negotiation between the parties to resolve a violent acting tenant? We don't understand this. Item six, the LTO fee will go from 145 to 350 to cover the added expense of additional staffing, training, insurance costs, et cetera. We feel that some fee increases warranted, however, we're concerned that 350 is excessive. As a Philadelphia landlord, I can tell you, from 2022 to 2023, my taxes went up on average of 41%. It amounted to $420 per door or $35 per tenant per month. It amounted to $420 per door, or $35 per tenant per month. Maybe some of those increased taxes can be diverted to cover the, the additional costs of the LTO program. In conclusion, we feel that the recent incidents during evictions is not reflective of the LTO system. It's reflective of overall crime in the city. In 2022, we had over 4,000 shooting incidents. We had 2,253 shooting victims, and we've had 516 homicides. If we address that problem, we feel that the issues that we've recently seen at evictions will probably go away or subside as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Next, we'll have Mr. Kyle Webster.
Thank you. I would like to start by just acknowledging two truths about myself. I am an evictor, and also, I am a Pittsburgher. I believe I am the only Pittsburgher in this room. Please don't judge me for that. My name is Kyle Webster, and I am the Vice President of Housing and General Counsel of Action Housing, the largest affordable housing nonprofit in Pennsylvania. While we do some work statewide, our footprint is primarily in southwestern Pennsylvania, with about 85% of our work in Allegheny County, where Pittsburgh sits. Action is a developer, program administrator, asset manager, and property manager. It is in this last category that we are sometimes evictors for the 1,200 units we manage directly and the additional 1,000-plus units we have an ownership interest in. As chief counsel for the organization, I have oversight over how we handle eviction processes and often lead the efforts myself. I am also actively involved in housing stabilization and eviction prevention efforts, and had the privilege of being one of five attorneys asked to sit on the working group convened by the Allegheny County Court of Common Pleas five years ago to establish our centralized housing court and redevelop our eviction process. I was asked to come here today to discuss how Allegheny County handles orders of possession and where I see flaws in the Philly process. I was asked to come to provide a difference of a municipality that handles evictions better. One week ago, when I first submitted my testimony, I was prepared to explain why Pittsburgh is better, and I still do believe that Pittsburgh is better, also how it handles evictions is better. But the bar is incredibly low, and statewide reform is clearly needed. I want to start by being clear that an eviction, no matter how well-executed, is a traumatizing and dehumanizing process for the tenant. It can similarly be traumatizing for the evictor, but in our current system, where housing, even governmentally subsidized housing, is governed by the free market, it is the only legal cure to breaches of the lease contract, most commonly through failure to pay. Notably, this is the only civil breach-of-contract claim in our state where standard and routine procedure for enforcement involves an armed individual showing up to the person's home and forcibly escorting them out with their belongings. We are currently facing an unprecedented eviction crisis throughout Pennsylvania, but most acutely in the urban settings that were uniquely impacted financially by the COVID pandemic. Due to the unprecedented nature of this crisis, cracks in a flawed system have been emphasized. An imperfect system that was able to escape by pre-COVID, mostly unnoticed by decision-makers and folks in positions of power, is now causing increased harm that cannot be ignored. These issues are no one person's fault, but the responsibility to fix this system, to better serve our neighbors, our community, and yes, Pennsylvania property management companies, sits with everyone in this room, in the city and borough halls around the state, and in Harrisburg. Our process in Allegheny County is as follows. Once an order for possession is issued, the landlord makes payment to the court for execution of the order. At the magisterial district court level, this execution is handled by the constable, and if the matter has been appealed to the Court of Common Pleas, it is generally handled by the sheriff. The constable or sheriff will post on the door of the unit or the external locked entrance of the building in which the unit exists prior to the potential lockout. This allows the tenant to still pay and stay up until the day of the lockout. On the day of the lockout, the sheriff will arrive in full uniform, and the constable is permitted to arrive in plain clothes. A representative for the landlord meets with the constable or sheriff, and the lockout begins with a knock on the door and a clear identification of who is present. There are also current conversations around offering or even requiring a mental health professional to assist in more complex lockout situations. While this is not currently the practice in Allegheny County, any conversation around making the process better and safer for all involved should consider this much-needed policy addition. Not all lockouts trigger a mental health crisis, but understandably, many do, and many tenants are in the situation they are in due to a mental health situation that pre-existed the lockout. Failure to properly acknowledge and prepare for this can lead to a much higher risk of harm for all involved. The tenant is then asked to leave the property voluntarily by the constable or sheriff, and the locks are then changed and belongings are removed. If the tenant does not agree to leave voluntarily, they can be handcuffed and led from the unit by the officer. Overall, this scene can be chaotic and stressful for all involved. As a landlord and as an attorney, I have found myself on-site at an eviction, feeling everything from slightly uncomfortable to devastated to fearful for my safety. Now, knowing what has occurred twice in Philadelphia and what happened just last week in Pittsburgh, this concern for the safety of my staff, my tenants, and my neighbors has increased and gives me pause with regard to who is present during a lockout and what trainings they need to properly have to handle the situation, and that includes what trainings my staff need to have. This is incredibly notable. Lockouts take time and resource away from Action's business of property management. The more disorganized and unpredictable the situation, the more a lockout costs property management companies. I oversaw an eviction three months ago that took nearly four hours following a predictable and flagged mental health crises due to the stress of the lockout. Three staff, a property manager, service coordinator, and maintenance technician spent half of their day solely focused on this one eviction, waiting for the constable to remove the tenant from the unit. This cost Action Housing $1,252.75 in staff time. Additionally, these staff were in a situation that we now know could have escalated and could have put them in danger. We knew this tenant would not respond well to the lockout, and we alerted the courts of this, but nothing was changed to how the process was handled. The safety of my staff is paramount, as is the safety of our tenants, both those who continue to live in our projects and those who we are forced to remove. A poorly handled lockout can be dangerous. It can lead to added expense on the property management company, to include a workers'comp claim, and possibly worse. Allegheny County is not perfect in how we handle evictions and lockouts. Mistakes are made, processes can be flawed, and inconsistencies exist in how things play out, often depending upon where you are in the county and/or what judge you are in front of. Last week, we witnessed the worst-case scenario of what can happen in the status quo where mental health resources aren't incorporated into the process, even following red flag after red flag. The scenario that played out last Wednesday in Pittsburgh happened in the same ward where I live and within three blocks of two different Action Housing buildings, both of which were placed on lockdown as a result. This situation was not an eviction. It was an ejection. But to a layperson, they look the same, and the potential for issues are likewise the same, given the similarity of the process. This situation was complicated, and there is a lot of nuance I cannot get into today. But we now know that lockout procedures in Pennsylvania this year have a death count, a death count that I genuinely believe was avoidable. We've also seen lockouts around the state where locks were changed on the wrong unit, causing trauma and stress to the incorrectly impacted tenant. This happened to an Action Housing staff member just last week and cost her landlord hours of staff time, in addition to the impact it had on my employee, who was terrified she was going to end up unhoused due to this mistake. What is happening right now is preventable. Things like proper notice, clear announcement of who a public official is, double-checking an address before a constable or officer goes out, a landlord having to produce the lease at the time of the lockout, mental health professionals incorporated into the process, and proper training are easy, obvious elements of a comprehensive landlord/tenant policy. However, there are many more things that can and should be considered, and I am happy to discuss and would welcome the opportunity to advise on. Evictions are easily my least favorite part of my job. Even in the most justified situation, I know that I am causing an individual who has the right to housing to potentially face being unhoused. This action should not also imminently risk a tenant's ability to exist due to an improperly handled lockout. I am hopeful that landlord attorneys like myself continue to be brought to the table alongside policymakers and tenant advocates to create comprehensive and humane answers to the complex issues caused by the current reality of evictions. Thank you for the opportunity to speak on this matter.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Our hearts definitely go out to your community out in Allegheny. Really tragic news to hear about the person who lost her life during that eviction proceeding. So thank you for being here. We'll allow your disparaging of Philadelphia to slide for now, and just really appreciate all the testifiers for, for being here today. I believe we have a couple members who have questions. I will pass it first to Representative Cephas.
Thank you. And again, my, you know, prayers go out to, you know, your community as well. You know, I mentioned it at the top of my remarks that, you know, we now have a death toll as it relates to, you know, lockouts here in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. And again, given the housing and rental crisis that we're experiencing across the Commonwealth, not that I anticipate these issues or these circumstances to escalate to that point, there still will be challenges across the Commonwealth unless we address them, to your point, from a systematic level. So I know the previous panel mentioned, because of the lack of transparency and accountability of the system that does lockouts in the city of Philadelphia, it's difficult to measure whether or not, you know, their effectiveness, whether or not we could be, you know, going into a different direction, if we could add process and procedures and protocols to what they do. So I know that's difficult to do, again, because of the lack of transparency and accountability. But just from each of you's perspectives, your organization's perspective, and your experiences, would you all at least agree that we need to make some changes to our
Representative, I think, I think the simple answer is, is yes. You know, I think no, you know, from our, our members' perspective, there's no one that wants to enact violence, no one wants a shooting to occur. Obviously, the last two incidents in Philadelphia have raised the alarm here, not only locally, but at the state level. You know, for our members, we, as we mentioned, we already go through 30 days of mediation. We mediate before we have to do mediation. And I think the open dialogue with the resident, you know, working with the mediators in the eviction diversion process has helped. Obviously, there's more that we can continue to do, but, you know, that 30 days that we already have is what we believe enough to have a conversation. Get those resources to folks. We have the 30 mil, the 45 million, I'm sorry, of rental assistance. It's how do, how do we connect a resident to that funding, and how do we, you know, cut the red tape here?
We feel that safety and security of the tenant and the landlord/tenant officers is vitally important, and any reasonable step that would improve that, we'd happily consider. Our big concern is that there is an increased bureaucracy, great delays that impact the, the small landlord to the point of basically our members going bust. But if, if it's reasonable, if it's for public safety, we endorse it.
The easy answer is obviously yes. What I would say is, I'm not an expert on Philadelphia. I did not know about the landlord/tenant officer until a few months ago, when a city council in Philadelphia engaged me and invited me to speak, and I learned a bit more about it. I think it's a really bizarre process, and it doesn't make sense to me. That being said, I don't think that the need for reform is isolated to Philadelphia, and I think it's important that you all look beyond the bounds of this one county and recognize that especially your urban partners on the other side of the state desperately need some changes and some regulations, and I think that we need to even look at our more rural and suburban counties and see that the way things are playing out right now is far from perfect.
Thank you for acknowledging it being bizarre as to what we do here in Philadelphia. Hopefully, these conversations can change that. But I also do want to acknowledge our local city council for dedicating millions of dollars to rental assistance. As you saw throughout the pandemic, that this was, you know, a line item in everybody's budget that we need to continue to sustain. So I'm hoping that we can follow Councilwoman Gautier and Councilwoman Brooks's efforts in ensuring that these resources are available. And I know you all mentioned the diversion program. Throughout that process, is there a constant, you know, opportunity to intervene with, like, mental health services and, you know, additional resources outside of rental assistance before it ultimately gets to an eviction? And even during that court proceeding process, are there other opportunities to, are you all still bringing up those resources, you know, just as a last resort with the hope of getting them connected to something so to prevent the lockout?
So I don't want to speak for the mediators. I know one of the components of it is bringing in all parties as part of the negotiations. I do, I do know that they do get in contact with housing counselors and, you know, try and create a pathway for next steps. But to my understanding, I don't think there's any mental health aspect or counseling component to it.
I'm not aware of any either. It's, it's usually relegated to simple matters like coming up with small repayment plans, coming up with smaller lease, lease defaults such as an unauthorized pet, unauthorized occupant, things of that nature.
Again, I'm not a expert on Philadelphia's diversion program, since I exist mostly on the other side of the state. But I will say, one of the, the things that you all will have to struggle with as you work through this is, for a landlord to flag a mental health crisis in an eviction process is a fair housing issue, and something that most landlords, myself included, are going to really hesitate from flagging beyond kind of a passing comment to try to ensure that safety is there. So that's where, you know, the mediator's being trained in that, the, the social workers at the table, et cetera, would be a really key, key tool. In Pittsburgh, we are constantly flagging where there are mental health crises. The gentleman who was killed last week, his mental health crisis was well-documented and well-flagged by nonprofits, by the courts, by the sheriff's office, et cetera, rather than engaging mental health experts, because that is not a part of the process. The response was to increase the number of sheriffs that showed up, which, again, I don't think the sheriff's office in Allegheny County did anything wrong, because there isn't currently an engagement of mental health resources in that process. But the flagging is definitely going on, so the opportunity, as you frame the question, is definitely there. There just isn't currently a follow-through, because there's not a public policy to mandate that follow-through or to allow for that follow-through.
And last, last question. You made a distinction about it not being an eviction.
Yes.
What did you call it?
An ejection.
Okay.
Do you know what that, do you want me to explain that, or?
Yes, I do.
Okay, it's a very, and I apologize, I'm a lawyer. I don't expect everyone to understand this.
Right.
So an eviction, I'm going to try to make it as easy as possible, because I've explained this a lot the last week. An eviction means that you have a legal right to be there based upon an oral or written lease document, and that there has been a breach of that lease document in some way that has led to that contract allowing for a lockout. An ejection means that you never had a legal right to be there. So a common word, though this is not technically right, and I'm being a lawyer here, would be that you're a squatter or something of that nature. So it means that there is no need for an eviction proceeding, because there was no contract that gave you the right to be there. And that situation in Pittsburgh last week was an ejection, not an eviction.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Representative Khan.
Thanks, Representative Kuduski, and thanks to the panel. Question to this second panel. The first panel seemed to universally endorse four components, and I think in our bill there's at least three, and possibly we could look at, I maybe mistaken the fourth component maybe as part of it. But I wanted to ask this panel to weigh in. The consensus was that, as part of a reform package, there would be a standards for eviction, there would be accountability and transparency in evictions, there would be a warning system, standard warning system in evictions, and then there would be a social worker or behavioral health worker involved in evictions. And I wanted to hear each of you to sort of weigh in on those recommendations. Thank you.
Thank you for that question, Representative. In regards to the standards, I mean, we, you know, we follow what government dictates to our industry. You know, obviously, with the eviction diversion, we have some standards, notice of diversion, you know, a lot of different components of notification to the resident as part of that mediation process. We already have the process through the courts that we go through. For, for our members, I think the general consensus is, anything that extends the process or adds costs is where we're going to have issues, and that's why, you know, these conversations today, bringing in the different stakeholders impacted by the eviction process, I think is, is obviously, you know, a place where we want to get to and continue to work through legislation. Warning systems, you know, we already have notification systems to residents, and we update that information pretty much on a monthly basis to, to get in contact with the resident. The social worker piece, once again, if it doesn't add costs and doesn't add, add extended timelines, I think that's something that we would get on board with as well. And if we're talking about, you know, specifically what it looks like at the doors, I think there are more reforms that we could also have that discussion about.
Okay, so just, just on that, so your association would be opposed to any intervention that would increase the cost of evictions?
If, I mean, right now, we already increased it with the reforms. We talked about, you know, it going from 145 to 350. If that promotes the safety of residents, we're obviously going to be in support of that, and obviously, you know, the safety of owner, safety of the LTO, we're in support of that, but obviously, you know, we're But obviously, you know, we're having a conversation today, when there's legislation, we're happy to be at the table for it.
When you're referring to these four items, standards, accounting, and transparency, warning systems, and social workers, are you referring to at the individual landlord level, or are you talking about the legal system leading up to the eviction?
This would be a reform package that we're working on from the state level.
Okay. So to answer that question, by all means, standards are necessary in any policy procedure or operation of law, absolutely. Accounting and transparency, by all means. Public officials, people doing public work, need to be accountable, and what they do needs to be visible to public and stakeholders. As far as warning systems, I can say for certain, there are so many warning systems in place, it's not even funny. And concerning social workers, my observation is, 95% of the time, it has to do with an economic issue, a tenant who chooses or isn't able to pay rent. From time to time, yes, unfortunately, there are special situations that require social workers, and by all means, if the system has a way to dovetail that into the process, we'd enforce that. Our biggest concern is, things don't run step by step by step, so we have 30 more steps. If they run concurrently, so be it. But Philadelphia has the absolute slowest system in the state, and it should not be extended.
I would say in spirit, I definitely agree with all of those. I think there's nuances to them. Most importantly, again, my leaning is a bit more mental health oriented in the process, though I do think social workers are a key and important piece. The one thing to keep in mind about that is that there's a cost to those on the service providers' front. And I know that in Allegheny County, we are running out of money for this particular space of eviction prevention and housing stabilization, so there would need to be a conversation around there. And social workers, I mean, to his point, social workers can engage the tenant in workforce development programs, can engage the tenant in financial empowerment programs, in budgeting, in credit counseling, et cetera. So having them, knowing that the majority of these situations are financial, having somebody who is empowered to know all of that, to incorporate that into the tenant's knowledge base is a really powerful and good thing. Transparency, to me, though, that's so obvious, that I would think that that shouldn't even be one of the four, because that should just be an inherent part of any public process, which unfortunately, an eviction is very much, it should be, not unfortunately, it should be a public process.
Thank you. If I could just say, you know, as a representative, what I'm looking for is the safety of the people in my community, and I hold that paramount, and I understand that the safety of people has to be a top priority in making sure that people are not getting shot, that situations are not getting worse when they don't have to. And, you know, and looking at this package of reforms, that will be my priority, is making sure that the people in my community that are at risk for being evicted, that are being evicted, are having the process done in the safest way possible. Thank you.
Thank you. I will just quickly, just to comment, I know it was mentioned that 95% of these cases are due to economic situations, but I bet if we were to look into some of those economic situations, they are probably connected to a mental health crisis. We know that many times, people deal with economic insecurity, job loss, the fear of eviction, which are all very emotionally and mentally trying situations, where I believe a professional who could be there during, before, after, to assist that person could hopefully stop that kind of economic situation from happening in the first place. I know we also have Representative Sterla, if that's a question?
Yeah, just quickly, you all have presented some great ideas about what we ought to be doing, and as Chair of the Committee, one thing I know, I think my counterpart can attest to, is we try and do markup sessions on bills before we move them through the Committee, and we try and get stakeholder input. So, one, you'll all be called again to, we'll send you copies of what we have, once it's drafted, we'll say, give us input on this, we'll invite you to a meeting, you know, because again, I've always found that if you can do things upfront, you can prevent a whole lot of problems later on. And some of the things that I think have been talked about and recommended here today are to do things upfront so that we don't have that problem on the day of eviction. And, I mean, I agree that simply extending the date of eviction doesn't alleviate any of those issues if you haven't, if you don't have a mental health professional involved at some point in time, if you don't have a social worker involved at some time, if you haven't given proper notice, if you haven't done all that kind of stuff. Just delaying the inevitable doesn't necessarily change any of that stuff. So I want to make sure that when we're working on this, we actually look at, I mean, I was first brought into this because I saw what was going on in Philadelphia, and I went, gee, I wonder what we can do down in Philly. And the more I've been brought into it, the more I'm like, yeah, no, there's a lot we can do statewide, because this applies to more than just LTOs. This applies to the whole system of how we go about doing this. And knowing the housing crisis that's out there, this isn't going away anytime soon anywhere in the state of Pennsylvania. Until we get to the point where there's a bigger supply than there is a demand, chances are that these kinds of things are going to be happening for the next 10 or 15 years, and how we can de-escalate them is what we need to work on. So I appreciate your testimony, and thanks for coming today, and we will be back in touch with you, I guarantee that.
Thank you. And I think unless there are any other questions from Committee members, we can move on to our next panel. Thank you again for your testimony, really appreciate it. Thank you to our last panel for your patience. So next, we'll be joined by Councilmember Jamie Gautier, Sheriff Rochelle Bilal, Lieutenant David Fallon, and Sergeant George Morse.
Hello, how are you?
Just need to make one correction. They said George Morse, he held lieutenant, I mean, captain. Sorry, I didn't hear what I was saying. No, I did.
All right. Thank you again for your attendance. We will start with Councilmember Gautier.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Chairman Sterla and members of the Housing and Community Development Committee. My name is Councilmember Jamie Gautier, and I am Chair of Philadelphia City Council's Committee on Housing, Neighborhood Development, and the Homeless. I am also a tenant. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to participate in today's hearing. Philadelphia is the only city in the Commonwealth that empowers landlords to retain a for-profit civilian entity to evict tenants. Because the landlord-tenant officer profits off of lockouts, she has an incentive to undercut the sheriff's price and service time. But as Latise Bithia's lawyer put it, landlords, quote, "got what they paid for," officers with discount training at discount prices. Evictions carried out by the landlord-tenant officer civilian contractors follow a harmful formula that traumatizes our neighbors and leaves them without life-saving resources when they need them the most. There is no written contract between the municipal court and the landlord-tenant officer. There is no public bidding process, no written standard for how to perform evictions, no direct notice to tenants about when an eviction will occur, no resources provided to tenants during an eviction, no accountability to Philadelphians, and no government oversight. It was within this reckless and opaque context that the landlord-tenant officer civilian contractors shot Angel Davis and Latise Bithia, and we have a duty to make sure that no one else experiences a similar trauma. Councilmember Kendra Brooks and I have been working with the municipal court, community legal services, and landlord groups to reform the landlord-tenant office. I appreciate that after three recklessly violent encounters within a span of a few months, the landlord-tenant officer provided her subcontractors with safety and de-escalation training and engaged out-of-county constables to perform lockouts. However, we have told the landlord-tenant officer and the court point-blank that contracting with constables is not an acceptable long or even medium-term remedy to LTO's haphazard operations. And frankly, I find it ironic that the proposed solution to the landlord-tenant office's shortcomings was employing those the office was created to replace. But in my opinion, the most troubling thing about this plan is that outsourcing evictions to armed constables elected in municipalities outside of the city does not ensure public accountability to Philadelphians, nor does it satisfy the need for robust government oversight. It is important to note that the subcontracted constables will not be serving in their official capacity as elected officials, but rather as armed civilians, subject to no more accountability or oversight than the subcontractors who shot Angel Davis and Latise Bithia. Lockouts will always be economically violent, most especially for the black and brown people who endure a disproportionate amount of them. But if we keep accountability for evictions within our communities, we can better ensure Philadelphians receive the dignity, empathy, transparency, accountability, and professionalism we expect from those completing any public service. Right now, Philadelphians are the only Pennsylvanians denied this right. For instance, Chairman Sterla, in your native Lancaster County, it is my understanding that constables and deputy sheriffs acting within their official law enforcement capacity perform lockouts. Residents become constables after being voted into office by their neighbors. After at least 80 hours of training, 120 if they want to be armed, the local magisterial district may appoint a constable to complete court duties such as evictions. When they interface with tenants, these constables must follow the Pennsylvania Unified Judicial System Constable Policies, Procedures, and Standards of Conduct, or risk losing their authorization. And of course, voters may decide not to reelect a constable, incentivizing constables to serve their community with integrity. None of these mechanisms of accountability or oversight exist here in Philadelphia for this process. Constables subcontracted by the landlord-tenant officer operate as armed private citizens. They are neither elected by Philadelphians, nor do they have a direct relationship with the municipal court. They come from communities that do not look like ours, and we do not even know their names. For the safety of everyone involved with the eviction process, a majority of the Philadelphia City Council agrees that we need to restore accountability over this public function to Philadelphians and the city of Philadelphia, but we need your help to do it. There are several possible legislative reforms to the landlord-tenant office, many of which are being discussed here today. One such solution I wish to explicitly uplift is legislating a landlord-tenant officer advisory board. Many counties across the Commonwealth, such as Allegheny County, have boards that approve and review constables who perform evictions. But the ad hoc working group focused on reforming the landlord-tenant officer is not authorized by the municipal court's president judge to review, approve, audit, or remove the landlord-tenant officer civilian contractors. We do not even know who most of them are. Mandating an advisory board like those already found across our Commonwealth would help bring this public function back into the sphere of public influence. To protect the safety of all parties and ensure that families can exercise their legal rights or make plans to find alternate housing, I also urge the state legislature to require the landlord-tenant officer to directly notify every tenant of the date and time of their lockout. The landlord-tenant officer's proposal to provide notice to tenants only upon request does not address widespread grave concerns about tenants being surprised at their door by armed private contractors who allow 10 minutes before locking families out of their homes. Surprised lockouts increase the likelihood of conflict and threaten the lives and safety of everyone involved in the eviction process, including the landlord-tenant officer civilian subcontractors, and especially elderly tenants, and tenants with disabilities and complex medical needs. Philadelphia has 40% less evictions than pre-pandemic, thanks in part to our eviction diversion program. However, this means most conflicts that make it as far as a lockout likely involve the most vulnerable of the most vulnerable tenants. Forcing tenants enduring one of the most traumatic experiences possible to call the landlord-tenant officer to find out when they will be thrown out of their homes is unrealistic and unjust. The landlord-tenant officer already tells landlords when a lockout will occur. Tenants deserve this direct communication as well. Direct notification is a common practice in New York City, Pittsburgh, as we heard, and countless other municipalities nationwide. It is also a standard operating procedure in a Philadelphia sheriff's office. In fact, as you will hear momentarily from them directly, the Philadelphia sheriff's office already satisfies most of the eviction reforms that city council seeks. I recognize that the sheriff's office does not currently perform as many lockouts as a landlord-tenant officer, but the sheriff's capacity can be increased, and my council colleagues and I are actively engaged in talks with them about how to do this. No matter who ends up with the solemn authority to conduct evictions in Philadelphia, it is clear that the opaque, reckless, and dangerous status quo cannot continue. I'm grateful to the municipal court for examining and amending the landlord-tenant officer, and I look forward to continuing to work with them on this. However, I firmly believe that to permanently cement the public safety eviction reforms Philadelphians urgently need, the state legislature must act. I want to thank you, Chairman Sterla, as well as Representatives Kuduski, Cephas, Kahn, and Green, and the entire Housing Committee, as well as every representative here today, for focusing on this issue. I also want to thank your state senate colleagues, Senators Saval and Street, for their partnership as well. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilmember. Next, we will have Philadelphia Sheriff Rochelle Bilal.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, chairmen and members of the committee, especially our state representatives here today. I am Rochelle Bilal, Sheriff for the City and County of Philadelphia. I am here today with my team to address and explain the Philadelphia Sheriff's Office process for carrying out evictions. First, let me point out, our eviction process is handled by our Civil Enforcement Unit, which is comprised of sheriffs, detectives, that receive training beyond the standard 19 weeks required for our deputy sheriffs. Our sheriff detectives are experienced, trained in avoiding incidents, de-escalations, confrontations, providing special handling for the intellectual disabled, and those who may have health challenges while working in concert with our warrant unit and the Philadelphia Police Department. Our success rate in handling evictions is due to the extensive training our detectives receive in carrying out this oftentimes hazardous assignment. Before I close, to introduce you to my captain, and to make a correction up there, instead of Mars, it's Captain Thornton and Lieutenant Fallon, before I do that, let me give you just a little history of the sheriff's office having to assume a unit from the judicial department in the city. For more than 30 years, the sheriff's office Civil Division has executed commonplace writs of execution and ejectments. Most were as a result of foreclosure process. Others may have been appeals in MC Court, Landlord Lieutenant Court. The MC evictions have been handled solely by court-appointed civilian officers. Our Civilian Division has, over the years, encountered a array of obstacles while executing evictions, including but not limited to the following: individuals with various levels of health and mental health illnesses, barricade individuals, individuals branding weapons, individuals that faced homeless upon being evicted. Each of the four mentioned was handled with professionalism, respect, and empathy. And check this out, without incident. Our Civil Unit detectives, aside from attending our 19-week State Certification Academy at Pennsyl- at Penn State, also attend specialized training after academy completion and throughout their careers, that most of their training is not one time, it's throughout their careers, such as CRT, Critical Response Training, that they attend regularly at the Philadelphia Police Academy. In 2015, the Philadelphia Sheriff's Office was asked to consume Court Warrant Unit. This request was made due to lawsuits and rising complaints as the result of the unit's encounters with the public while exercising warrants. This unit consisted of twenty to thirty civilian officers. Upon transitioning into the Sheriff's Warrant Unit, a more structured setting, they were trained on the sheriff's office policies, procedures for dealing with the public, executing warrants, and court orders. They were then subsequently sent to our nineteen-week academy at the Penn State, where they became certified as deputy sheriff's officers. Needless to say, the integration of these new officers into the Sheriff's Warrant Unit benefited the city by reducing the lawsuits and valid complaints to zero. The compensation of the Court Warrant Unit was not brought up to shine a bad light that the unit had, but to demonstrate how the city's liability can be reduced by having the sheriff's office assume the responsibility of executing the MC evictions. The cost savings may not be visible in the immediate, but in the long term, with the reduced liability to the city and savings will become evident. So I introduce to you Captain Thornton and Lieutenant Fallon, who will give you what the sheriff's office had been doing past thirty years. And by, let me mention this, John Green has not been the sheriff of this city since 2009. Captain Thornton, you want me to move over?
Okay. Good afternoon. I am Captain Thornton, Philadelphia Sheriff's Office, commander of the Civil Enforcement Division. I'm sitting in for Sergeant George Morse. As I was sitting around listening to everyone testifying to the situation here, it drew me back to a situation which I was directly involved with. I recall a situation where we was conducting an eviction, where a woman was standing on her lawn, who was going to be evicted, waving a bat. I was lieutenant at the time, commander, still the commander of the unit, and I was the supervisor on that scene. We talk about accountability. I was accountable for my actions, meaning supervising my detectives that was accompanying me going at eviction. And I was standing there listening to this woman, she was irate, obviously, she was being evicted, again waving a bat on her lawn. The first thing I did was talk about de-escalation. We had to de-escalate the situation, first of all. And what we had to do, we had to find out why she was irate, other than simply being evicted. We found out that she had an issue with the landlord, so clearly was some type of backstory going on between them two. The first thing I did was remove the landlord from the scene, so we can calm this woman down. Yes, we still conducted the eviction, yes, but it was a way that we did it, the tactical way of doing it. Needless to say, the eviction happened, as the sheriff said, there was no incident. Now, I'm not going to continue because I have Lieutenant Fallon here who's going to explain the entire eviction process. You have some pamphlets and things like that up there, so I'm going to let Lieutenant Fallon sit in and talk about exactly how we do evictions in Philadelphia Sheriff's Office.
Good afternoon. Lieutenant David Fallon, Civil Enforcement Unit, I've been there for five years now. You were passed out some pamphlets, some literature, so the first thing that should be on top, first thing that's on top is a notice that we give with every writ of possession. It has resources inside landlord tenant office, Community Legal Services, and we're willing to add whatever we have to, if anyone has any more resources. This is posted with the writ. We also have a notice to vacate. This is posted with the common pleas writ. It kind of explains it to the general public, because not everyone's going to know what this means if you just stick this on someone's door. So in addition to the writ, we also add this notice to vacate, which tells you what's going on. Each notice to vacate has our office number and the detective's cellphone number on there that's handling the eviction. So occupants or tenants have an opportunity to reach out to the detective handling the case and get whatever information or resources they need. After the first notice is posted, I'm speaking about the common pleas court evictions right now, this is how we handle common pleas court evictions. So after the first notice is posted, it says on here you have twenty-one days to vacate. After that twenty-one days is passed, it's usually a few weeks after that twenty-one days have passed, we post the writ again with an actual date and time on there, which tells you when we're coming. We don't do any surprise evictions, and it has not been an issue for us so far with people knowing we're coming. We find a lot of times they leave before eviction day because they don't want to be embarrassed, because it could be an embarrassing situation. But even if they are still there, we handle it tactfully. A lot of times, the neighborhood neighbors may just think they're moving out. They may think we represent the bank or the property manager. We identify ourselves because we have to, but you know, from down the block, it doesn't look like there's a SWAT team at your house throwing you out of the property. So that's how we handle the common pleas evictions. Now, the landlord tenant ones, we follow the rules of civil procedure. You get the first writ, that's the alias writ, and on the back, you fill that out, which tells them you have ten days to vacate. You put an actual date and time on that, but the eviction is never actually on that date, it's not till we receive the alias writ. And then when we receive the alias writ, we give the same notice with the actual date and time that we give for common pleas court evictions. We do walk away from evictions if there's issues, but we don't walk away if someone is just loud or aggressive and yelling. We just step back and wait for that to calm down and take the necessary steps that we need.
Thank you, LT. So that's pretty much our eviction process, and just something I want to go over real quick. Why the sheriff's office? Why should the sheriff's office do evictions? Well, you see that we provide a pamphlet, as the lieutenants explained. There's resources in this pamphlet for the occupants to seek help, seek legal advice, or seek legal representation, affordable legal representation. The second thing I think is very important when we execute eviction, we're not experiencing everything, we're law enforcement, right? We have training in just being in law enforcement, things of that nature. But there was another situation that I personally encountered, in which I went to a property, knocked on the door several times, couldn't get in, there was a locksmith present to allow us to get into the property. We cleared the property, went around to make sure that it was okay for us to transfer it over to the rightful owner. But I went upstairs to the middle bedroom, opened the door, there was a dog there, a pit bull. Now, me personally, a little scared of pit bulls, especially ones I don't know, so what I did was pull the door back shut. Again, like LT said, we walked, stepped back, took a step back, and just allowed the situation to play itself out. Well, in this situation, called animal control on the scene to remove that animal from their property and safely executed that eviction. There's another situation in which, again, I countered, where there's a woman who had obvious mental health issues. We didn't walk away, we knew this going in, why? Because we made several contacts with the individual on the property. So we assessed the scene and did the right thing by calling mobile mental health, let them know that there's a woman that there's obvious mental health issues. So on eviction day, we let them know that it was an eviction pending or the actual eviction day, and we had mental health out there with us to assess us with the eviction. Did we do our job as sworn law enforcement officers agency? Yes, we did. Did we do it safely? Yes, we did. So we used what we have available to us to execute these evictions. We recently worked with PCA, I forget the acronym. Philadelphia Corporation for Agent, I always forget the acronym. Yeah, so we use that. Again, we made contact with the occupant, found out their situation, called the right resources to help effectuate the eviction. I'm not going to belabor, you pretty much know who we are and what we do and how we do it. Sheriff?
I'll close it out with this. I'm a long-term resident of the city of Philadelphia. I've been here all my life. I kind of know most of the people, if I don't know all of them, in Philadelphia. I'm an elected official. I'm not appointed. I'm beholden to the citizens of this city. And I'm a child from North Philly, and so I know about evictions, and I know about being put out of locations. So we act humane under this administration. So if there's a situation that they arrive at, at a house that they're doing an eviction on, they know who to call, they know who to get to that location to basically handle their situation. If a person doesn't want to come out, then it becomes a barricaded situation, and then we get the police involved, we get the negotiators involved, and so that we can basically de-escalate every situation that we get involved in. So by us doing ejections dealing with mortgage foreclosures, we haven't had an incident because our men and women are trained in how to manage situations. What I don't see here is having outside agencies coming to Philadelphia that they don't know. I say active police department, they tried that, it didn't work. So if there are any questions, we available.
All right. Thank you, all of you, for your testimony, for being here. I'd also like to recognize Councilmember Kiada Johnson, who has joined us. Thank you, council member, for your attendance. I'll start with a couple of questions, and I know we have some members who have questions as well. Questions are for the sheriff's office. It's two questions. One is, if you could just share, what do you feel like are the main ways in which your eviction process differs from the LTO eviction process? And then secondly, I'm just going to point blank ask the question, do you have interest in taking on these eviction cases? And if so, what resources or capacity or funding, whatever it is, what would your office need to be able to take on those cases?
Look, I got my chief financial officer here. I got my undersheriff here, and my under-undersheriff's over there. The whole family is here. They saying, yes, look, we are citizens of this city. We do what we have to do to make sure that people in this city are safe and that families are comfortable. This is not a good process, but we need to be humane in doing so. And my staff is trained in that, every which way. They kind of know me by now, and I don't take none of that, we're going to rush in and bully anybody. This is not a profit organization, the sheriff's, is it? So we don't have to go and get it done because we need to get the money. Our job is to arm the courts, so we go by what the courts is asking us to do from that process. But yet we do it humanely, and there's something there that we need to stop at that point, then we get the resources there to do it. My staff is saying, yes, because they are capable in doing it, and we don't want to see another incident happen in the city dealing with this situation of evictions.
Thank you.
There was two parts to that question.
Yes.
The first part was about, excuse me, first part about how do we differ? I really can't speak on exactly how they do things. There's rumors and there's some talk with occupants who may call us, how they handle it, and there's some testimony, fifteen minutes of things of that nature, where clearly, we don't execute evictions, we don't show up at someone's property, fifteen minutes to say you have to leave. So that's the clear difference. So we can all agree that that fifteen minute thing is not what we do. We give ten, ten, seven, I don't know. So we know we have several encounters with the occupant to let them know about the pending eviction. That's what I can speak on. The second part?
Thank you.
First, thank you, ladies and gentlemen. So we've, oh, my name is Patrick Liam, the Chief Financial Officer for the sheriff's office. So we looked at a cost absorption model, which was very important to this process, based on what the sheriff had received as a form of information. First and foremost, to sustain what the officers are doing right now, we have to look at the personnel requirement, which we did first. So it would expand from currently what they operate on is roughly from twelve to fifteen in that unit, which would go up to about thirty-seven. Yes, there's a financial requirement to make that happen, because you're talking about, one, expanding the personnel and the Class 100 personnel funding to support that, obviously through internal promotions and other teams required to do that. The second portion would be the resources required to allow them to operate efficiently as they're operating now. You cannot ignore that, and those two components are required to continue, for them to continue the way that they operate. Anything less than that, you will not see the efficiencies that you're seeing now, which in result, when you look at a deliverable, zero incidents of violence, zero incidents of conflict, major support with regard to how they de-escalate everything from my assessment, when we looked at the way that the model would have to continue to operate. So having said that, we would have to look at the personnel requirement to bolster this, to manage this, to execute this. So in doing so, you have to look at the total infrastructure for this unit, and also how it impacts the way that the sheriff's office operates.
Councilmember Gotti? Okay, sure. Yeah.
Okay. One, the sheriff gave a very thorough presentation, but I just wanted to hone in on some very key differences that already align with the reform that we've been pushing for in city council. So the notice piece is huge. You know, I think that in order to create safety for everyone involved, tenants have to know when they're going to be locked out, and the sheriff's office does that. The social services piece and the connection to resources, and then the extensive training that you heard described, and the accountability piece, and that the sheriff is elected by the voters of Philadelphia. I also wanted to note, obviously, I don't know where my colleagues are definitively, but I wanted to note that an overwhelming majority of city council is also in agreement on these reforms, and I think that bodes well for both the transfer ordinance process in the fall and the upcoming FY25 budget process, for us to have more detailed discussions with the sheriff's office around the specific resources needed.
Thank you. That's really helpful context. Just a couple of follow-up questions. So just so I understand it correctly, you said the unit currently is twelve to fifteen personnel, and to your estimate is to take on this increased caseload, it would have to be thirty-seven personnel, is that correct?
Right.
Okay.
And that's the civil detectives. They take a test to get promoted to that, from a deputy sheriff to a detective.
Okay, got it, understood.
That's not the whole sheriff's department.
Right, sure, just within this one, this one substructure. And then, is there any kind of, and maybe this is preliminary, maybe it's something that I'll dig into during the future budget conversations, but is there any preliminary numbers around the increased cost, how much increased funding would be needed to get up to that thirty-seven number?
Yes, we've looked at that, and to initialize it, we're talking about anything to include operating equipment up to three million, and that is just the minimum. Other elements that would be factored in would be overtime required if the volume increased, which is something that would have to be looked at and assessed in addition to technology. One of the biggest things that I noticed when we did the assessment for the office in '21 was that a lot of the operating units were missing technology that they require to operate and function. Sheriff Ballot has done a wonderful job in getting that technology integrated, but with this particular scenario, you would have to but with this particular scenario, you would have to ensure that that would be, uh, part of the, uh, development process for, for expanding the services or the duties of those officers in that unit.
Got it. And so, uh, so, you had mentioned, so, 3 million ballpark, maybe?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Uh, and then, my, my last question, and then I know there's other members who have questions as well, um, we've talked at multiple points during this hearing about the idea of having a social worker, a crisis counselor, some kind of mental health specialist to be present during these evictions, and what is your offices, uh, your office's position on the idea of having that mental health professional be present during evictions?
I think, um, Captain Thornton stated that when there's a, a, an ejectment, if they're working, because prior to going out, they do a workup on the property and the people that may be in the property. So, if there's any mental health situations going on, prior to that, we contact the, uh, catchment centers or the mental health people so that they will go out with, uh, the off, the detective to the property just to ensure that that is taken care of. When we get there and no mental health person is there, we're not bombarded and we're not going to engage that person until the services show up to be, assist us with that. Uh, we take training in mental health situations, but we'd rather have the specialists be there. So, we in favor of that anytime.
Good to know, thank you. Um, so, I know, uh, Representative Cephas and Representative Jones have questions. Uh, we'll start with Representative Cephas.
Thank you for your testimony, and again, I both, I both thank you for, you know, leading with your lived experience, one as a tenant, one, you know, having grown up and could have potentially, you know, faced some type of eviction, or at least knowing someone that has faced eviction. I think leading with our own individual experiences, you know, helps bring a capa, compassion to a situation that's extremely difficult, so I thank you all for that. Um, so, I mean, this question is just an attempt not to put parties against each other, the tenant versus, um, the actual landlord, but I just want to hear your perspective on the difference in the cost to hiring the sheriff versus the LTO. And if you know what that cost difference is, since they're constantly undercutting, is there a thought as we have this conversation, so landlords aren't overly burdened because now they have to pay more because they're going with the sheriff now? Is there a thought to make, to possibly bringing your cost down to the LTO so it's not, you know, deferential to the landlord in that process? Has that been a conversation? And I know this is a new dialogue, but is that a thought? And if we do bring down that cost, what is the associated, obviously, increase to the mid-year transfer ordinance that would be needed to offset that cost? So, again, we're not burdening, further burdening the, um, the landlord because, you know, one of the things we do have to balance in this conversation is that if we are pushing out mom-and-pop landlords, we then have large companies coming into our city and, you know, perching up, purchasing up sloths of housing, which has just recently happened in your district, Councilwoman Gotti, and we want to, you know, make sure that we can, you know, maintain and manage that foundation, but also protecting our tenants.
Those fees are set by City Council.
Oh, okay.
See? There's a difference between the elected officials and those that you just, uh, contract with.
Right.
Those fees are set by City Council. But as you notice, experience, training, insurances.
Costs more.
Come about with a cost, so you pay for what you get.
Right.
If you hire the sheriff's department, you get experience, training, and you get patience. LTOs, you got none of that. So, you pay for what you cost here in reference to the landlord, but I think the city works on keeping small businesses in place in this city, and so, those fees will come from City Council. We don't set the fees at the sheriff's office.
Okay.
Um, I will say that, um, with this sort of new version of the LTO that, uh, since it resumed, uh, last week, um, or on the 21st, rather, the costs are more on par.
Okay.
Um, I believe in the past, the costs were something like $150 or something where the sheriff's is, um, a little over 300. I don't know if I'm quoting exactly, but something like that. But now, with the increased training, um, and the use of out-of-county constables, the costs are a little bit more on par. And I'll say, as we continue to dig into this process and what it should look like, um, that we are considering the cost to landlords. It's not our intention to put mom-and-pop landlords out of, out of business, so that will all be a part of the conversation.
Great. I think my other two questions is, um, in your, and I'm not sure if you can say this on the record, but in your conversations with the courts and the discussion about potentially pivoting to a different system, taking it out of private hands, what has been the feedback, if you can say?
Um, I think, I, I do think that, uh, the President Judge, Judge Wolf, and even the LTO recognize that we can't, we could not continue operating in the way that we were. So, I do appreciate, um, the volun, you know, that they paused operations, um, and that they put some key, you know, reforms in, in terms of more training around de-escalation. Um, I think we have some more work to do, um, in agreeing on the need for much deeper reforms, um, agreeing on the need for accountability. You know, it was said to us in this working group that the LTO has no written policies and that she doesn't need them, right? So, agreeing, agreement on, you know, just the having standard written policies, um, agreement on what it's like for a tenant to try to undertake or to go through this process. The notion that a tenant is going to check the court docket, um, is not really, doesn't reflect really, uh, an understanding of what eviction processes are like for people who are very vulnerable. So, I appreciate that the working group exists, I appreciate the partnership of the municipal court and the LTO, um, but I think we have more work to do in coming up with a process that really ensures that this is safe, um, and compassionate for Philadelphians.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next, we have Representative Jones.
Thank you, Sheriff Ballow. First of all, I, I love your first name, Rochelle. Uh, it's also my wife's first name, so.
See, I knew we had something in common.
Yeah, I know.
Other than that, push for the constables.
You, you kept, you kept looking at me like, what's, what's this guy got going on? All right. So, yeah, uh, so Rochelle's a beautiful name. Um, but a couple of questions. What is roughly, and I'm not asking for specifics, what, what, what is roughly the breakdown in percentages of, uh, evictions handled by the Sheriff's Office versus the LTO? What is that roughly?
Let's say, we do ejectments because we deal with mortgage foreclosure.
Okay, okay.
We get evictions most of the time for the appeals from the court.
Okay.
And let's say, when this situation occurred, we went from doing 40 a year to 50 in two weeks.
Wow, okay. So, it's increased significantly.
That's correct.
And it's not, and, and we, just from our, the testimony we've heard today, um, the earlier, I think it was the 1960s, constables were done away with, there was a lack of accountability, there was a lack of transparency, um, and, you know, maybe some corruption, who knows? But it seems like we've regressed with the LTO, um, so, you know, considering where the LTO is now, maybe we're, it's a similar situation, we find, you know, you find yourselves in a similar situation. The, the question I have actually is, is, um, more so, um, I know we recognized, uh, we've talked a lot about constables here, and I, I do appreciate, um, I have, in my community, we have constables, uh, and, and our sheriff's department as well, but both of them perform these services, and, and they, they know our community, and there's a value to that. So, I do appreciate that, um, you know, that, that stance. In the, but in, in the interim with, you know, with shortages in staff and those sorts of things, um, having those things with the training, and of course, the testimony was offered too, as far as, um, you know, social services being, um, brought into that mix as well. I guess my, we recognized earlier Constable Joshua Stout is here, and I was wondering, we've talked a lot about constables, but we haven't heard from constables. I was wondering, there, the, uh, the situation that was, uh, you know, the situation from the 1960s with constables, I believe there's greater accountability now, and I was wondering if you could just briefly, um, mention, like, is there, is there a, a review process? Is there accountability? Is there transparency? Like, for instance, like, it, so is there a process in place where constables can be held accountable? And I was wondering if that, if that would be, Chairman, if that would be okay if I asked that question of, uh, of Constable Stout, Stout very briefly?
Okay, sure. Uh, we can quickly have, it's a.
So, can you, can you say again? Constable Joshua Stout was recognized earlier.
Okay. Can, can you go to a microphone so we have it for the recording?
Sheriff, thank you, appreciate it. Good afternoon. Thank you for, uh, allowing me to be here on behalf of the Pennsylvania Constabulary. To answer your question, I'll do it as briefly as I can, I know we're running a little late here. Uh, the Constabulary, um, has, has undergone expansive oversight and updates, uh, since we came into play in 1664 as the oldest law enforcement in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. Uh, 2009, Pennsylvania Act 49, uh, was implemented that oversees all of the regulation and oversight for all of our training and performance of judicial duties, including evictions. Uh, in 2013, the Pennsylvania Supreme Court also instituted a rules and regulations and , uh, policy booklet, uh, that, uh, basically, uh, said, in order for constables to perform any of these judicial duties that we do perform, uh, they set standards of procedures and policies that we have to follow, and absolutely, there is oversight in that. We are accountable to, uh, the Commonwealth Oversight Board, and we're also accountable to each individual county's judicial oversight board for constables. So, if there is any complaint or any issues that arise, uh, they do have an oversight board in each county that, uh, constables would answer to anytime for any of the, uh, complaints regarding judicial duties that they perform. Go ahead.
So, so you're saying that any constable from anywhere in the, in the Commonwealth would be accountable to the, to the county of Philadelphia?
If we were assigned judicial duties to perform in the county of Philadelphia, much like the Sheriff's Department, absolutely, we would be accountable to the judiciary. We are, I, I'm from Montgomery County, when I am performing judicial duties on behalf of Montgomery County, I am, I am accountable to them, 100%.
And if you would.
Thank you. Uh, sorry, Representative, just respectfully, uh, you know, I wanted to recognize the constable due to his attendance and participating, uh, but our, our panelists are the Philadelphia Sheriff's Office and the council members, I don't want to get too distracted.
Certainly. Thank, thank you for your testimony.
Just, just one quick, one quick clarification here. So, if you're doing your duty as an official constable, you are required to meet all those standards and are answerable, accountable to the people. But if you're hired part-time on the side by an LTO, you are not considered in your official capacity, is that correct?
I would argue that because you are, you, the judiciary from Philadelphia assigned the LTO position, they created the LTO position, and they have tasked that LTO with performing judicial duties on behalf of the judiciary of Philadelphia. So, therefore, as an extension of that person, whoever it is that they are having, uh, perform these duties, that's an extension of, of that assignment. So, I'm performing that in my official capacity, particularly if you're asking for us to have all that training and experience, so.
Thank you. I'm going to pass it to a council member who I think wanted, wanted to respond.
I just wanted to express that it is very important for us to get, uh, clarity from a legal professional on this point. It is not my understanding, we've not, we've been told that constables that are elected outside of Philadelphia County are acting here as armed private citizens. So, I, I just think it's very, um, very crucial that we understand what we're talking about, um, when someone is carrying out this important function and that accountability, um, that will exist.
Thank you. Any other, Representative Khan?
Thank you. Thank you. Um, so, I have a question to this panel and to the Sheriff's Office. You know, as a nurse, I, I can't imagine there being a system where a patient can go to the hospital and they could get a nurse who they know has been trained, who they know is accountable, who has standards, or who, who's also been taught in education to the people that they're serving and who has sworn an oath to serve and protect. I can't imagine a situation, like a parallel situation, where you could also possibly in Philadelphia, go to a hospital and get someone who's working like a nurse but has potentially none of those. They don't have the standards, the training, the edu, education, and also, they're carrying a weapon. Um, so, my question to the Sheriff's Office is, just on a gut level, as a, as a professional who serves, how does that strike you to know that we have a system like that in Philadelphia where you could be evicted by someone who does, does have those training and versus someone who, we don't, we don't think they, they actually do, they may not? I'd like, like to ask that to the sheriff and to the, uh, Thornton and, Officer Thornton and Fallon, thank you.
Yes. Let me bring up, bring up one of my, my undersheriff with the two under, undersheriffs, I think y'all need to sit up here to answer that question.
First of all, getting back to the other one, I am unaware, I'm sorry, Parra Karimel Shabaz, the undersheriff of the city and county of Philadelphia, to Sheriff Ballow. Uh, to my understanding, as a lawyer of 37 years, I'm unaware of any law that would allow a constable that is elected and in that is empowered in Montgomery County to come into Philadelphia County and have the same oversight. It doesn't exist unless it just started existing. We can't go by feelings, we go by law. That's the first thing. Secondly, we're inviting people who are, who are security guards, as, uh, respectfully, uh, Councilwoman, Councilperson Gutierrez said, security guards to perform the duties of people that we have already duly elected, duly trained to perform. It is a scary environment because of one major reason that I think we skipped over. They're not, they're not familiar with the environment. You don't know North Philly from West Philly. You don't know the bottom of West Philly. I can talk about Northeast Philadelphia and say a name you don't know. In different parts of the town, in different parts of the city, in different parts of this municipality, there are different environments that you encounter. One of the things we have that is an advantage is that we understand the people that we're encountering. Can you imagine, on the worst day of your life, having someone knock on your door, have no understanding of your circumstance, of your neighborhood, of your community, of the environment that they're in, then tell you you have two minutes to go out? That creates a hostile environment. I'm not saying at any stretch of imagination that then, there can't be confusion even with people that work and live in the same city. What I am saying is that what we do have is a track record, and that track record is based upon people who have 19-plus years of experience. It's based upon no shooting. There was no shooting of anybody that was either an ejectment or in fact, somebody that was being evicted. That's the reality. I'm not talking fantasy, and I'm not talking anything other than a movie. It's reality. Lastly, there's no profit margin. No profit margin means that people are working based upon the things that they need to do. We don't need 15 evictions to make a certain amount of money. I wanted to say that all day, so I apologize for that.
Uh, thank you. Uh, I believe Chairman Sterling.
You want to?
Wanted to send me a comment?
Okay.
Was there one more? Sorry.
I gotta stay at this very vocal.
Um, just need to say something on, piggyback off what the undersheriff said about that question. Myself, I have 25 years as a silver servant. I'm proud of that. This is what I do, day in and day out. The undersheriff said, there's no profit. I have a salary, it's set, I just do the job. My colleagues around here spend 19 weeks of training to do what we do every single day. The sheriff said you have to take a test in order to be a detective to execute evictions. That's an honor and a privilege to be able to do the job. As the commander, I walked the front line, and now I'm training others up to do the things that I've done over the last 25 years. So, your answer, uh, state rep, is a slap in the face of someone else to come in here and do what I've been doing for 25 years.
Let me say this. There's no slight on constables. They are elected in the counties in which that they are elected in and serve, and to my understanding, in those areas, they do a good job. So, there's no slight from me in reference to what they do. I don't slight law enforcement officers that take on this job. I don't slight law enforcement officers that take on this job wherever they are, whatever they're called to do, because it's a job, and sometimes it's a dangerous job, to do it right. But we just know the record of the sheriff's office in evictions and ejectments, and under my leadership, they go out with information when it comes to that, so that people who don't know now have a booklet to say, I'm being evicted, let me call Community Legal Service, let me call Philadelphia Housing, let me call here, so they can get some help. Most times, people get these eviction notice, and they go in and shut the door and they pray that it go away, but it doesn't. And so when you get resources and you get somebody giving it to you, saying, look, call these people, or call me and, and my, my constituent service, because if they call the sheriff's office, I have a constituent service that will walk them through that process on every number that's in that book until they get somebody. Sometimes the eviction has to go. It can't be worked out, but it's worked out with them, the landlord, and the tenant with humanity.
Thank you. Appreciate that. We know this is obviously a very emotionally charged and very intense topic of conversation, so I appreciate, appreciate you saying that. Next we have, we'll pass it to Representative Belmont and then Chairman Stella.
All right. Thank you all for testifying, and thank you, Sheriff, one of our finer members of the 203rd Legislative District, so thank you for being here. I had a couple of questions, and I really just wanted to get your, your thoughts on what one of the previous testifiers said when he really linked gun violence in the city of Philadelphia to, I guess, the run, the rise of gun violence from the LTOs. And I wanted to know, I wanted to get your thoughts on it, but I also wanted to see if you or your deputy sheriffs have experienced any rise of violence, just any more violence than what they have normally experienced, I guess, in the past two or three years? And I wanted to see, I guess, injectments, that's my, that's my new vocabulary word for today, I'm learning about that. So I wanted to see, has that happened either in evictions or injectments in the past couple of years? And once again, your thoughts on what he said before.
Fallon?
You got to come up to the seat. He takes. So the answer to the rise in violence correlating to eviction issues, for us, we haven't seen a difference. We have our incidents, we have our hostile people, but it's few and far between. I, I could probably, if I thought about it, remember the names of the people that have been arrested or cited, or where we had to get police involvement, or a, you know, a higher level of, of enforcement out there to help us out, and no, not, not at all, not. The increase in gun violence has not affected how we operate, or made a greater danger to us on the street.
So is it, in your professional opinions, is it just, is it policy and is it training that makes sure that people are safe at the end of this proceeding?
Yes, and contact. The most important thing is finding out who's behind the door, through neighbors if we have to. I mean, we go out several times, first notice, second notice, and if time permits, the officers, the detectives, they try to go out the day before the eviction too, and knock on the door and make one final shot at getting contact if we never had it from the start. Not everyone's going to answer the door. So sometimes we can't figure out what's going on until eviction day, and that's why they'll go out there. The day before is one final attempt to make contact, and most of the times, the day before, you'll find people moving out.
When they say about the violence in the city, we all know that violence in the city and anywhere has a holistic factor to it. It's not just about any one particular thing that brings about the circumstances of uprising and violence, but to my understanding, homicides is down in the city. We work with all the law enforcement agencies in the city, Police Department, FBI, DEA, ATF, we work with all. Matter of fact, some of my deputies are detailed to these agencies. So we come together, so when we are dealing with any evictions or injectments, we have a workup. We go into the computer, we find out who's in there, who's around there, and as he said, our detectives go out and they talk to different neighbors just to find out what the feel is about the property. We just don't get a, a, a bill, and it becomes money, and we run to the door and, and we start that process. We get a feel of what's going on.
And lastly, if I may, Sheriff, to answer that question, one of the advantages about knowing the community, we learn through community outreach. One of the major platforms of this sheriff's office is community outreach. We're always doing food giveaway, bookbag giveaway, block parties, information centers. What happens then is you develop, as they say, community policing, you develop community sheriffing, and that gives us an opportunity sometime to know the neighbor of the person that's getting evicted. And we'll find out, some of our detectives do, and some of them, and I got to tell you that Lieutenant Fallon and Captain Thornton are actually experts of this, they'll talk to the neighbor and understand whether or not there is a dog if they didn't hear it bark, whether or not that person is going to be home or not being home, whether or not the person is in jail. I heard one landlord say, I didn't even know, you, I'm sorry, Chairman, who said, you know, I didn't even know the guy was in jail. But that intel that we get through our associations with other law enforcement, that we get through our community involvement and community engagement, that we get through our, what I'll say, our scout team, finding out what's going on helps and aids. A lot of these individuals are individuals that are down and out, but let me say this, we do understand, and the sheriff said it to me just before we came over here, there's some people that are just deadbeats, they're not paying their bills, and these landlords, some of these landlords are living off of the money that they are gaining to take care of their family based upon the properties that they're renting. There's no doubt about that. But if you don't give notice, if you don't talk to the people, if you don't know the surroundings, if you don't know the neighborhood, if you don't do any scouting, if you don't do any law enforcement, computer, outreach, or in fact, investigation, you won't know. They are walking into situations that not only the tenant doesn't know that they're coming, but they don't even know what they're walking into, and our advantage is intel.
And I'll finish with this. Our community outreach is, these pamphlets are made up. They're not just given at the time of an eviction. They are given out in our community outreach, because we say to people, it may not be you, but take it home in case any of your family members come into a situation like this. You can give it to them in advance, and these are the people that you need to call so that they can get the help. We do it with this, we do it with our mortgage foreclosure, ejectments, we do it with evictions, we do it, all of these pamphlets are on our website, philliesheriff.com, and we give them out in every community outreach because we want everybody to know how to keep you home, how to stay safe in your home, and if you come across anybody that's dealing with these circumstances, here's some information that you can give them to help them out with. So we do this, let's say, holistically.
Thank you. I believe next we have Chairman Stella.
Thanks. This has been a very helpful meeting, and we're only an hour and 15 minutes overtime at this point in time, but I think that part, part of what I view as the reason that this has been a good hearing is because if at, we were supposed to end at 3:50, if at 3:25 or 3, 3:10, I had said, sorry, we're done, we got to leave, that would have, it would have not been a good hearing. The outcome would have not been the same. And I think one of the big, big takeaway that I have here is that in one case, there's somebody who says, I have the time to do my job, and the other case, there's somebody who says, I got 10 minutes to do my job, or I, I lose money and therefore, and, and so if, if we are, if the LTO process is still going to exist in Philadelphia, I think there needs to be some way of making sure that that changes. I would also say that in the interim, from what I've heard in the testimony, in the interim, while LTOs still exist, it would seem to me that if they were hiring retired police officers and retired sheriffs from Philadelphia who maybe wanted to pick up a day's worth of work instead of have a full-time job at this point in time, that might be an optimal place to look for employees, because they would know the communities, they would have the relationships with the other, the, the current sheriff's office and Philadelphia Police Department to say, in the case that there's something that's going to get taken to a different level, I know who to call, instead of, yeah, I'm out here just trying to make my buck today. And so, but we will take all this back, and, and we're going to spend a lot more time on this than we did today, but I, I want to thank you for bringing this to our attention and look forward to working further on this.
I got one comment, Mike. Representative Stella.
You're, you're Kenyatta and I'm Mike. We go way back.
Mike, Mike was the policy chair when I was in Harrisburg in the General Assembly and always on the case. I just want to thank Madam Chair as well for bringing this to our attention. I just wanted to also go on the record by, by saying, one, first and foremost, I totally support on the sheriff's office taking over the eviction process here in the city of Philadelphia, and it kind of begged, it begged the question, why was the sheriff's department responsible for addressing evictions in the city of Philadelphia, just based upon the work that they're already doing, right? And so I want to go on the record saying that I've had this conversation with her, her team a couple of times, and also want to acknowledge my colleague, Councilman Jamie Gaudier, and also her partner, who's not here, Kendra Brooks, for stepping up to the plate and making sure that this, these three incidents that took place actually backed to back within a, what, three to four month period, right? Not get swept under the rug, and we just go about our lives as if nothing has ever happened, right? And so I thank you and your team for, for really putting pressure on those who are making the decisions around this process, having this hearing, but most importantly, there has to be a level of reform. For me, three individuals lost their lives, right? And so when you're talking about one system that's not professional, I would say in my mind, right, and you have another system that's actually professional, and you have one system that's driven by money, anytime you're driven by money, you're going to do things that meet your bottom line, period. Cut corners, do what you got to do because you're driven by money, right? And so when you go back and do your evaluation, you know, as you mentioned, that should be definitely taken in consideration. But I also be remiss that I didn't say, and, and, you know, sometime I like to go there, but I have to go there, I just think that if three Caucasian people were murdered, like, back to back to back to back, I think it would be a different level of uproar in this city regarding dismantling a system and trying to figure out how we're going to move forward. And so I thank my colleagues for saying, no, we're not letting this get swept under the rug. We're going to stay on top of this issue and to continue to advocate around this issue until we get some level of resolve. And so I thank all of you for coming to the city of Philadelphia, highlighting this issue, going back and looking at how we can do policy working together on addressing the issue. And so with that being said, I want to thank you, and also another question that comes to my mind, I'm going to follow up with my colleagues on this, the people that pulled the trigger, like, do they get prosecuted? Like, what actually happened in terms of them taking their lives? Because we see day to day when if, if this was Philadelphia police officers, right, there'd be a thorough investigation, what happened before you pulled that trigger and took somebody's life? In this case.
There are two civil suits. I don't know about the, I don't know if there was any criminal, no, no criminal, sorry. We don't know that, but we know there are two civil suits.
Just taking a look.
I did have a question as it related to that. Is the city liable for any of the incidents that had taken place? Do we know that?
Not that I know of.
Okay, thank you.
So thank you very much, and good job with that one. Good job, colleague, and Madam Sheriff.
So I had to say one last thing, and this is just for my colleagues and my officers and the ones that were there that have retired. A lot of their training, especially in I Want You, and it came from a specific person who used to be my chief deputy of operations. I would have had his three-page bio here today, but he wouldn't let me do that. So just so that you know, each of the ones that are in position now train the other ones, and they do it extensively. So they give back 100%.
Thank you, and thank you again to the sheriff, all the staff in the sheriff's office, to Councilmember Gaudier for your testimony, to all the other panelists who are still here, and everyone who's attended, in attendance for this hearing. I am really just grateful for us having this conversation. I think we all know that evictions are the worst day in someone's life. It is a traumatizing experience, it is, it is something that no one wants, whether it's the sheriff, the LTO, the resident, the tenant. It impacts the person, it impacts our community. And so hopefully, all of us can work together on city-state elected officials to figure out how we can uphold dignity and compassion in this process. I feel very confident that we'll be able to come up with something, because our city deserves it, Philadelphians deserve it, and I just look forward to working with everybody here to ensure that housing is a human right and people are treated humanely. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. I'm adjourned.